All the presentation portion of the Anderson County Commission meeting to order. The first resolution we have is honoring Mr. Jim Woodward. That's going to be presented by Dr. Parrott.
It is an honor to be in front of you tonight to honor such a fine man and a really, truly hero to this county. And I know reading this won't do you justice, but we will try our best, okay? This is Resolution 19-11-795, Resolution Honoring James T. Woodward, Sr. Whereas it's always been difficult when one of our most valued and cherished employees retire, but today we pay tribute in honor to a career of not only one of Anderson County's finest, most professional employees, but a true American hero. And whereas Jim Woodward will be retiring in January from his position as Deputy Director of Operations and Chief Financial Officer for our school system after serving the citizens of Anderson County since 2004. And whereas Anderson County has been very fortunate to have Jim, and we are very grateful for his tremendous accomplishments, as he led our school systems' financial affairs through some difficult times and decisions. But due to Jim's tireless efforts, he leaves the school system $65 million budget in one of the most stable financial positions this county has experienced in over three decades. And whereas Jim has always been consummate professional and become the envy of a lot of professional financial directors across the state, a lot of them tried to steal him from time to time, just to let you know. Prior to Jim being employed with Anderson County, he had already developed a tremendous professional reputation among his peers through his notable work with the Department of Energy contractors such as Lockheed Martin and Union Carbide. And whereas Jim has been honored with many professional awards and honors during his career, including the Who's Who of Executive and Professionals, Lockheed Martin Presidential Award four different times, the Vice President Gore Prestigious Hammer Award for his impeccable leadership in government service, and the distinguished Department of Energy's Professional Recognition Award he earned for four times. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Cumberland and his Master's of Business Administration from Lincoln Memorial University. And despite his many professional accomplishments, we are most proud to call Jim a true American hero for his combat service in Vietnam. Now Jim is not one to embellish his military career and seldom mentions it, but he, for his 13 months in Vietnam, saw some of the most fierce combat assignments of the war as a Marine Corps forward observer. Jim would trek deep into the jungle behind the enemy lines with a single partner to identify and locate opposing military forces and direct artillery, Navy gunfire from battleships off the coast, and close air support for ground operations. These highly dangerous missions earned him the Navy's Achievement Medal of Combat V Device for Combat Bravely and Heroism in 1969. Now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 16th day of December 2019, that we congratulate our dear friend and colleague for his tremendous service to the Anderson County and to the Department of Energy, and furthermore honor him for his prestigious military service defending our great nation. Be it further resolved that we declare December 31st, 2019, as the Jane T. Jim Woodward, Sr. Day in Anderson County for his dedication and devotion to the citizens of Anderson County and to the United States. Resolved and duly passed and effective the 16th day of December 2019. And... One thing I would like to do is add my personal thanks to Jim for, when I came to Central Office about 12 years ago, the first time I met with Jim, he said, "Now you need to realize, you may be the boss, but I hold the money." And I said, "I understand that." And I would come to Jim and I'd say, "Jim, can we do this?" And he said, he would always give me the right answer that he had, and the answer I wanted, not what, the answer I wanted, what I needed. And he'd say, "We can't do this or we can do this." And it is true, Jim has left the Anderson County school system in the best financial place that they've ever been in in my 27 years, and I do thank him personally for that. And he is, not only that, he's a good dear friend of mine, and I, we're going to miss you dearly, but you've done a tremendous job, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You can, if you want to say something.
Oh, man. I really wasn't expecting quite this. They've covered, they've covered everything. Jay's done an excellent job, and Dr. Parrott, and the school board. I do have some remarks that I would like to make, though. I want to thank Mr. Chairman, Commission. I'd like to thank you and the Anderson County Board of Education for this great honor. It's a capstone to my career with Anderson County schools. It's one that I will cherish above all. Thanks also to the Board of Education and Dr. Parrott for the opportunity and support during my career here. I've been privileged to work alongside great district school administrators, and classified personnel, and a very talented business office. And with, with great support from the county finance and purchasing departments, all of whom I will miss greatly. These people are the ones that are actually, this is a team effort. One person cannot do all those glorious things. It is a team effort, and the support that is within this county, y'all have a precious, precious commodity. Please protect it, and I know you will. All this was made possible by the support of my strong family, who are mostly here, and my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Who they are?
Tell us who they are.
Okay, this is my lovely wife, Jody, my daughter Melissa, her husband Keith, Keith Phillips, and Melissa Phillips, Isaac Lee Lloyd, and Summer T. Lloyd. Jimmy Woodward, my son, my grandson Jimmy III, my mother Ruth Woodward, and my aunt Barbara Young, and my brother Stevie.
We're glad to have everyone.
If I may, one last thing. Two things, I had two things that really helped, helped get us through some of the hard times, and this may help, somebody may pick this up. But from the Marine Corps, we had a motto called improvise, adapt, and overcome. And from my academic life, I had a, another motto that I really liked. It said, "Out of clutter finds simplicity; from discord finds harmony; in the middle of difficulty lies opportunity." And that's by Einstein. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Next resolution is honoring Dr. Curtis Sexton. It's going to be, he's not here tonight, so, okay. Then we have a resolution for Mr. Tim Thompson, requested by Mayor Frank.
Resolution number 1912794, a resolution recognizing Tim Thompson for his 27 years of aiding economic and industrial prosperity in the state of Tennessee and Anderson County. Whereas Tim Thompson has been a longtime fixture in the state of Tennessee and Anderson County, helping bring an estimated 18,000 jobs and more than $3.5 billion in investments to the state through economic and industrial development. And whereas Tim Thompson was managing the governor's office in Knoxville when it was announced in 1992 that he was moving to the state's Department of Economic and Community Development. And whereas it was evident to those around him at the time, Tim wasn't just interested in a position, he wanted to make an impact in the world around him by bringing jobs and prosperity to the people of our state through his tireless work. Whereas in the days before GPS, Google Maps, and websites, and online information available at your fingertips, when a company was looking for a new location, their representatives would make phone calls and put their trust in the hands of local economic developers. And whereas Tim Thompson knew every industrial site and building within an 18-county region, and the community data related to each of them, and he would often schedule a company prospect to visit between six and eight counties in one day, always keeping everything on schedule. And whereas Tim Thompson was named President of the Anderson County Economic Development Association in August of 2004, and during his tenure, Tim has helped bring up to 5,000 jobs and an estimated $1.7 billion in investments into Anderson County. And after dedicating the last 27 years of his career to making the state of Tennessee and Anderson County a better place to work and live, Tim Thompson has decided to retire at the end of December 2019. And whereas Tim Thompson was recognized for his career achievements in September of 2019 with a lifetime member award from the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners and County Mayor Terry Frank, do gratefully recognize and honor Mr. Tim Thompson for his unwavering dedication to the betterment of the economic and industrial health of Tennessee and Anderson County, and wish him well in his retirement. Adopted the 16th day of December 2019. Tim, we're going to miss you.
So, let me introduce you to the Wizard. This is his nickname in the office. We share an office together, but I'll let the Wizard make a few comments. Congratulations, Bill.
Well, I'm kind of surprised tonight. I called Mayor Frank last week, and, Charlie, I wanted to come to County Commission and thank you for all the support you've given me over the last 15 years. I wasn't expecting this, so, anyway, I'm here to thank you for the support you've given me in 27 years of economic development. The biggest complaint most local developers have is, "We can't get anything from County Commission." Well, I never had that problem here. Everything I have ever asked for, funding or support, you have come through for me. And that's just really rare in East Tennessee, so I, none of this could have happened without your support. Special thanks to Commissioner Creasy, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner McCamey, Commissioner Whitehouse, they were here from day one. I think you were here in 2004 when I started, so, I just hope you'll continue support. And like I say, to the citizens of Anderson County, you should be proud of this commission for the support they've given economic development over the last 15 and a half years. Thank you.
I do want Tim to share a little fact that I didn't feel were appropriate to put in the resolution, but this is the ultimate Vol'fan. And until he had a heart attack, how many games had you not missed consecutively?
Well, it was actually just a stint in my heart. I've, I've missed four home games, four home football games since 1967. So I'm there, win or lose.
When was the first game? What was the score?
The first game I saw was Tennessee Vanderbilt, 1962, in Nashville, Tennessee, 130 to nothing. But I don't, the only thing I remember was the guy that went with us dropped the wiener out of his hot dog on the floor. But I was just eight or nine years old, so, thank you.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have a public hearing regarding the rezoning of property located at 1127 Oliver Springs Highway, Clinton, Tennessee 37716. That's map 87, parcel 216. If there's anyone here that would like to make comments on that rezoning, just come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tony Jordan. I live at 350 Bacon Springs Lane, which is just above the property to be rezoned on the ridge. I represent several of my neighbors. I know that you've recently undertaken to revamp the rezoning process by sending out letters to neighbors and others. We only came to know about this through a very small and almost, you can't read it, sign on, on Highway 61 on the corner of the property. And you have to stop in order to read the sign, and you really don't want to be stopping at that place on 61 because so many of the semis are now using it as a bypass for 95 for Oak Ridge. Anyway, it's to be rezoned. The request is to rezone it from residential to commercial. There are 20 residential properties surrounding this unused site. I, I know that it was a build, part of the parcel, it's a combination of parcels. Part of the parcel was built at a commercial rate even though it was, it was zoned residential, even though there was no commercial activity ongoing. And the building at the corner has been abandoned for, I've owned my property for 14 years, and it was abandoned before I got there. And so the case is, with, with more than 20 residential properties, it sits on the intersection of 61 and Ford Road. Now, those of you familiar with the Marlowe area, that's the location of the, of the Marlowe Convenience Center. The Marlowe Convenience Center sits on the Ford Road with both its entry and exit gates on Ford Road. Ford Road is a one-lane road. Recently, the county had to spend a great deal of money within the last two years to come in and put turn lanes in because Grand Fork School is the next property down, and cars were lining up on 61 for twice a day. We, we can't really object. We don't know what's going in. We've, we've heard that possibly storage buildings will be going in, but we don't know this because the property has changed hands. The requister of this rezoning is no longer the owner of the property, having sold the property, and we haven't had a chance to meet with the new owner. So what I would propose, we're not here to take issue with anything other than we, we haven't had an opportunity as, as the neighbors to consider this, and it would be the only commercial property in this area. All the other property is zoned R1 or A1. It's also, it sits with just slightly over 50 meters from Brushy Fork. There are two agricultural properties on Brushy Fork that run cattle, and so whatever property, whatever commercial enterprise is going to go in there, we're going to have to, to consider that significantly because the cattle drink from the Brushy Fork. So what we would propose is quite simply that we use the new rezoning method that the county has come up with, that letters be sent out to the neighbors, and that a hearing be convened for it, and that the neighbors have an opportunity to meet and discuss before we take the measure of transferring the only parcels of property in the area that would be zoned commercial.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to comment?
Hello, nice to meet everyone. Appreciate your guys' service here. My name is Vince Pontella. My wife here is Janeline. We live at 438 Bacon Springs. I'm not here for any particular issue, except I was completely uninformed, and I just recently found out through talking neighbors, seeing the signs. So whatever you guys are doing in the near future, just something to think about, that the public notice process in the past wasn't working very well at all. I have no idea what's going on. Again, I'm not necessarily against anything. It's just when you, when you live in a residential area, the purpose to have peace and quiet. I don't know if something's going to go there with constant security lights on, which I can see from my hill. I'm already dealing with noise till 9:00 in the morning from Sawmill, which is not what this is about. What I'm saying is the purpose of residential is to live in a residential peace and quiet after hard day work. Again, I'm just letting you guys know, most of us are completely uninformed, barely even knew about the meetings, so when you guys talk about this later, your next process, please help your public know about meetings. And I guess that's, from what I'm seeing, that's what you're going to do here real quickly. And that's all I want to say in my piece, just to let you know that I felt rather uninformed in the process that we currently have. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment on the rezoning?
Do you want to hear from the zoning office to address anything?
Yes. Danny, do you want to?
You guys should have a copy of a letter that a surveyor, Bill Easter, had typed up before he came to Planning Commission, which, by the way, this has been to Planning Commission. It has had a recommendation from Planning Commission. But that little short letter describes to the T., you know, what is being proposed From my understanding, the new buyer is going to put some self, put a self-storage facility in there. And they took, I think there was like originally four little small lots here. So the previous owner got with the surveyor. She's gotten up in years. The property has been taxed at a commercial rate for several years, even though it's a residential property, it's been taxed at a commercial rate for several years. So as she's gotten up in years, she wanted to have this property rezoned in hopes that, you know, a potential buyer comes along, it would be better for her children. Well, a buyer comes along before all of this has completely transpired. It went through Planning Commission, got a recommendation, but the potential buyer became the buyer. And so what he is proposing, from my understanding, is to put a self-storage facility there. And, and also, and I could be wrong about this, I don't think so, there's no other zone in the county, in the zoning resolution, that specifically allows self-storage facility, or there's no specific mention of it, except in a C1 zone. And so I think that's the main purpose of the rezoning, because there is a specific mention there in a, in a C1 zone. General Commercial District.
Commissioner Scott?
How did you go about notifying the residents of the area?
I mean, we've, we've done, you know, what we are legally obligated to do up to this point, which is to give public notification in the newspaper and put the sign out. We did talk about sending letters, even though the resolution hasn't passed yet, and from my understanding, it will in this County Commission meeting, I think. But we kind of felt it best to not take that on until that resolution passes. And so it has been posted probably 25 days prior to this meeting, maybe 20, somewhere along in there, public notification was given before the Planning Commission meeting, which again, they gave their recommendation.
So it was posted in the newspaper as well as?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
What was the other method of, of notice?
The signage, the sign that's there, yeah.
When did the new owner purchase the property?
Ah, now that I'm not for certain. I'm not for certain about a date, but, you know, I was told that there was a potential buyer before it went to Planning Commission. Well, somehow after Planning Commission, in between the Planning Commission meeting and now, again, the potential buyer became the buyer. I don't know what that date was, you know.
Roughly, when was the Planning Commission meeting?
This, this past Planning, or not the past Planning Commission meeting, but the one before that, so the November meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
November the 12th, I think, was that Tuesday, not for certain. Have to look at a calendar.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Creasy?
Did Robert have his hand up? I came down 61 today, and I didn't notice a sign. Which property exactly is it? Is, is it where that old fallen-down commercial building is located?
It is, and it was right out in the front yard of that, where, whether you was coming on Ford Road, or, or, you know, up or down 61, you would have seen it.
I remember the per sale sign was gone. It was for sale several months ago, or maybe a year ago, sometime in the past. But I'm, from what you're saying, the past owner is the one that came to Planning Commission to have it rezoned?
Yes.
And now we have a new owner?
Yes.
Did the new owner also come to Planning Commission and?
No.
Fill out an application?
No, he did not.
I'd like to get the law director's opinion of that particular action to see if it requires the new owner to apply.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't. The applicant doesn't need to be the owner of the property. However, they do need the owner's permission. But a lot of times, our applicant will be a surveyor or engineer.
That's what it was.
Somebody like that will be the applicant. They don't necessarily have to be the owner, but the owner does have to give permission.
Do we have that permission from the owner?
Yes, yes. I mean, that was their intention. The owner got, you know, the surveyor to come before the Planning Commission. He's, Bill Easter is commanding our Planning Commission meetings, and that was her intention. And of course, you know, that's what the, the buyer's expecting from this situation is for it to be rezoned.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment. I'm very sorry, I told several of you before the meeting that the new public notice provision that you had before you, that's fixing to come up, had been complied with. That was the last conversation that I had with Danny about this, that he was going to send the letters, he was going to comply with that. This is the first I, I knew about it tonight, that he didn't comply with that. But I'm sorry, that was the understanding we had about that, that we would comply with the, when you, that's going to be before you here in a few minutes.
Commissioner McCamey?
Yeah. Ms. Russell, who is the present owner and the one that actually asked this to be done, has a buyer subject to it being rezoned. He's not going to take it if they can't rezone it, if it remains residential. Even with the new zoning where that we send letters to adjoining property owners, the only adjoining property owners on this property are the children of Ms. Russell, and she, they were all notified. So even though the resolution hasn't been adopted yet, we actually did comply with it because everybody was notified that adjoining property, because all the property owners were notified.
That was another reason we didn't go ahead and mail out the letters, because the surrounding property owners is family, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to make a comment? Commissioner Scott?
Is this going to be voted on during full commission?
Well, we'll have, I'll have the report on it, and then if somebody wants to make a motion, then.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner White?
Commissioner McCamey and I represent that area, and that building has been an eyesore for several years since Lee abandoned it, sort of like. I mean, he would come in every once in a while and take pieces of equipment out and so forth. I am all for the building being razed or cleaned up. I mean, he would come in every once in a while and take pieces of equipment out and so forth. I am all for the building being razed, or cleaned up, or remodeled, or whatever, but since the neighbors down here raised a, an issue, you have to really look to see that sign in the yard down there. And, and Robert's right, the people that lives close to, adjacent to it, they're, they're children, they're, they're heirs to the property. If there's no really issue with the timeframe, maybe we could ask the Mr. Easter and the potential buyer, and the neighbors down there that's got a concern, maybe we could meet, and maybe we could clear the air, and see what's, see what's going on. I'd like to make that suggestion if I could, if we, to where everybody would have, where everybody would have a chance to respond to the change. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience, any other comments? Ma'am?
I didn't hear a thing she said.
She, she likes your idea.
Robert, would you be up to?
We're just, this is just the hearing portion now, but when?
I'm just asking Robert if he'd be up to a meeting like that?
Yeah, I'd be fine, I'd be glad to.
Okay, thank you, Danny. This concludes the, this public hearing portion. Next, we're gonna start the public hearing on a proposed amendment to Anderson County zoning resolution, new section 075-070. Jay, yeah, if you don't mind going over that?
This is an effort to strengthen our public notice measures. We've had a couple complaints over the past two years on this issue. Now, if you so desire to adopt this amendment to the zoning resolution, there'll be five different mechanisms for public notice. A will be a newspaper of general circulation in the county, that's two newspapers. It's the Clinton Courier, which is the county seat one, and the newspaper closest to the property to be rezoned. The second measure is Anderson County Television, it'll be posted on there for five consecutive days, and these are no less than 15 days prior to the meeting. And this is at all the stages. So you would see this notice for any variance, any special exception, any rezoning at the, either the BZA, the planning commission, or the county commission. So each step, there will be a public notice. The third way is Anderson County website, it'll be posted on there just the day after the county agenda is released. Then there'll be certified mail notifications, no less than 15 days prior to the meeting. Those will be all the people that are contiguous to the subject property, and any of the neighbors or landowners that are across a public or private roadway are also there, even though they may not be contiguous. Then the property posting and signage is a minimum of 15 days prior to the meeting, and again, at each phase of the process. And that is a new two-by-four, two feet by four feet, in contrasting colors. Where there is a temporary provision in there that allows the planning and zoning department to use their current inventory, they, Danny had just reordered, I think, what'd you say, $750, $850 worth of signs here when we started this, so as soon as those are exhausted, but no later than December 31st, 2022, will go to the two-by-four sign. But those are your five different methods. One of the areas that was in contention before was the process for certified mail notification. What we decided is the planning and community development department would address and send all the letters out, and keep the return receipts in their possession. However, each step of this, the owner or applicant for the rezoning, special exception or variance, would pick up the cost of this. And again, these are reasonable cost, it specifically states that. But anyway, we tried to address everyone's needs and desires, and also the planning commission, we put their recommendations in here also. Any questions on this new public notice provision?
Commissioner Scott?
So, Jay, how far out would you reach in considering somebody being a neighbor to receive certified mailing?
Contiguous, adjacent to, or across a public or private way.
Commissioner Jaeger?
I really don't like that we have three years' worth of signs on a, on a sign that's not working.
I can change that, he, again, trying to take care of his desire to use this inventory he has in place.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. That's just my, my only objection on, on just this read right here.
Danny, how big is your sign currently?
I think it's 24 by 36, I think that's what it is.
So we're looking at 24 by 48.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Smallage?
You mentioned contiguous neighbors, well, you know, this, this could impact beyond just the neighbors, immediate neighbors, is there any way we can look at notifying people who may not be directly next to the property being rezoned?
We can certainly look at that, if you, anybody's got some ideas, I'd be glad to. I don't know what the limits would be, if you try to define it by geographic zone, or just how much. It, there gets to be a whole lot of money in these certified letters going out, and a whole lot of time, but we can adjust it as you so desire, but right now, it's those that are immediately adjacent to, or across the public or private road. If you wanted to increase that, we'll certainly consider that.
Any other commissioners?
Thank you for your time.
Anyone in the audience feel free?
Just a suggestion, you could go sightline, anyone who has sight of the property to be rezoned.
Could you come up to the microphone?
Just one suggestion on the sign, would it be really helpful if there was actually a time for the meeting? The sign that's in front of the property that's being rezoned this time says December 16th at the courthouse, but it didn't say 6:00 PM, so that would just be a nice addition, and it could just be written on there.
Could you give your name and address where you're from?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Tony Jordan's wife, Ann Jordan, 350 Bacon Springs Road, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have a comment? Okay, this concludes the public hearing on the changing the rezoning resolution, and this concludes the presentation portion of the county commission meeting.
You guys ready to get started, you need a break?
Good job.
Wait for Kim here. Ready, Kim?
Okay, we're gonna call the Anderson County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order, Monday, December 16, 2019, a little past 6:30, but I think it was well worth it. I was calculating in my head, there's roughly 30 years just in Anderson County service. I know there's a lot more service those two gentlemen provided us, but that's gonna be missed for sure. But we're in good hands, we always have good leadership. Make sure everybody's clocked in here, we got everybody, Commissioner Denenberg is out. We're gonna have our prayer led this evening by Commissioner Vow, and then we'll have our pledge led by Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Vow, sir.
Heavenly Father, Lord, once again, we come before you, give you honor and praise and thanking you for everything you do for us every day, for saving our souls, for counseling with us, for letting us pray to you, Lord, and seeking your guidance. Please forgive us where we failed you, Lord, strengthen us, Father, to be more about your business. Lord, go with us into this meeting tonight, we pray that you bless the ones that have served our county and our people for long periods of time, we pray that you have blessed them abundantly. And Lord, as we try to serve those people here tonight, we pray that you give us wisdom and discernment to do what you would find right in your eyes. All this we ask in Jesus' holy name, amen.
Please salute your flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Vow, and thank you, Commissioner Scott. Next, we'll have appearance of citizens. Now, we have the senior center on the agenda, so when we get to that item, you can certainly come up and talk then, but there's no need to come up at this moment to talk about the senior center, because it's on the agenda. However, at this moment, if there's anything else that anyone like to talk about, please step up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Yes, sir, come on up.
Todd Waterman from 418 Orchard Knob Road in Clinton. I ran into Jerry Creasy the other night, and told him that I'd heard that, that the Oak Ridge TDEC office, which oversees the Superfund cleanup, was, was, which we had thought was gonna be defunded by the Senate appropriations bill, was, had actually, there had been some high-level negotiations, and that funding had been preserved. That was kind of rumor at that point, but, but Jerry asked me if I could come and update y'all on that. So basically, the, the, let's see, what is it, the, the National Defense Appropriations Bill funds that, that cleanup, and, and funds the Oak Ridge TDEC office. And there'd been a letter from Commissioner Salyer to Senator Alexander, who had proposed the language in that defunding the office, to the effect that, that, that without that funding, that would slow down, or perhaps bring to a stop, the cleanup itself, because TDEC had to oversee that by law. Anyway, a lot of us were concerned about that, and we were also concerned about the, the environmental protection agency's proposal to lower the standards for radioactivity, which obviously also applied to the Superfund cleanup as well. So the, the southern, the, I'm sorry, the Sierra Club put out an alert on both of those, and, and mentioned, you know, the, the problems around those, and, and had a link to Salyer's letter, and that, I believe I sent you all that action alert, so you're probably familiar with it. And it asked people to comment to Senator Alexander, and Senator Blackburn, and whatever, whoever your member of Congress was for your district, that would be Fleishman in our case. That, at last count, that, that, that alert had sent 514 comments to those members of Congress. So we're very pleased with the response, we've been circulating that widely, emailing it, posting it on Facebook, et cetera, putting, putting in various newsletters and that, and, you know, Ben Pounds of the Oak Ridge, and, and the Chattanooga, Chattanooga Times Free Press, and then Nashville, Tennessean, and various newspapers that carried stories and op-eds and so on about that. So there's been a lot of publicity around it. Anyway, I, I called Kobe Morgan at the Oak Ridge TDEC office a couple times, and this afternoon, he was trying to get me up to speed a little on, on some background, and all the regulations around this, and the engineering, and the science, and all that. And if you can imagine trying to explain that to an artist, that was, that was pretty hopeless. So you can imagine how happy I was, when, when, about 10 minutes later, Sid Jones here, who knows more about this stuff probably than anybody in the state of Tennessee.
Mr. Waterman?
And said that he'd be willing to, to come and, and fill you in.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay.
I apologize. Sid, would you wanna say a few words?
I mostly came in case, I'm Sid Jones, and I'm not an Anderson County resident, but I'm here sorta on the half of Todd, and I did wanna talk just a little bit to, I think he knows as much about what's going on with appropriations as I do. I've kinda tried to keep track of what's going on with all the various disputes that you've heard, and the, the, there's a dispute that Todd was kind of referring to about discharge limits, that's all the way at Washington, a lot of moving parts there too, so I can't really tell you a whole lot, but that's really a matter of who has authority on a Superfund site. This is a dispute between EPA and DOE, DOE saying, "We've got authority over all things rad." EPA saying, "On every Superfund site, we're the bottom line." And that impacts, if nothing else, at least the decision on wastewater treatment at the current landfill and at the proposed landfill. There's still a lot of other ongoing disagreements that, maybe some that I'm not aware of, but some that I am aware of, on the proposed landfill, some even within DOE. DOE has yet to procure approval from their national group for building the landfill, they have to have waste acceptance criteria, and all that sort of thing. So, and there, I think there's like seven issues between TDEC, I don't know how many more with EPA, and DOE, and, and this wastewater dispute is just one of them. So unless you all have questions, that's, that's about all I can bring you up to date on.
Thank you, Sid, appreciate it. Anyone else have anything they'd like to speak to the commission on before we go into the approval and corrections of agenda, any item? Thank you. Next, we'll go to the approval and corrections of the agenda, we'll start with the consent agenda.
Yes, sir, Commissioner McCamey?
Under four wastewater fund, I'd like to add Clinton High School basketball, $300. This is for their Washington DC Invitational Tournament travel, and Dr. Parrott said he would sign off on it, we didn't get the letter in time to get it in on the agenda, so, but he said that he will sign off on it and make that available.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to add that item to number four on the consent agenda. Any other items on the consent to remove or add? Yes, sir.
The other question is, on these, on these first two items, and I have four of the consent agenda, there really isn't a discussion of amounts, so it seems like that needs to be brought up in discussion in the regular meeting.
Well, it's in your package, I mean, it, I'm sure it's spelled out there.
The requests I, the things that were with my agenda did not, the only one that specified amount was the one about the, the schools.
Is that your request to move those to regular agenda?
Well, I just think it's just a brief discussion, so we, we can, as commissioners, make commitments to funding.
Does anybody have information on the Lake City Elementary School that's requesting funds for the Safety Patrol trip to Washington DC that they could speak to? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mead's point, I think this is the same procedure that we've always used. They send us the letter, the commissioners determine how much out of their designated waste management funds that we designate. I've already instructed Annette to, or I think I instructed Annette, if I haven't called you, I apologize, Annette, she's usually good at reading my mind, to give the remaining amounts that's been designated to myself for that. I've never known of us discussing the amount that we give out of that account.
Well, at least what they've requested, in this case, that there's, there's only general discussion of what it's for.
They don't request we determine what we give them, I think, is the procedure that we've used in the past. And I may be wrong, but that's the way we've done it in the past, Mr. Chairman.
Well, what's the pleasure, I mean, Commissioner Mead?
I would also, I would also point out that it also, this is also required to be signed up to including the superintendent of schools, and he did do that just before the meeting.
Okay.
So, so the signatures required are in place, and if the motion is for us to just all decide what we wanna give, then that's fine with me, and it doesn't have to go to further discussion.
I'll agree with that.
I'll agree with that, if I would. See, technically, we usually do that out of hours, but I think what Commissioner Scott did was got, you know, some for everybody, but if everybody wants to donate, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Well, here's where we are. We're in the middle of trying to approve the consent agenda. So, if we want to have debate on the items...
I'd draw a request to move it and it'll work fine, as is, because we each have the option of telling Annette how much we want moved.
Okay. So, you don't want to talk about it now?
Not required.
Okay. All right. Any other items? Commissioner Creasy, sir.
I was going to speak on it, but I'm going to listen to my chairman. And, but I will like to make a request when we change the regular agenda.
Okay. Any other changes or additions to the consent agenda as it's presented, other than the one we've already had? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is set with the one addition for the Clinton High School basketball. Next is the regular agenda. Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the operations committee up to 4A, 5A, I'm sorry. Right after the...
5?
4A. Yeah. After approval of the agenda. That has, we've got several citizens here that are seniors, and I'm sure they're here for one purpose, and that's to hear what the operations committee did about purchase of the building. So, I'd like to move that up so that they can get out here before the heavy rain starts.
So, you'd like to move up the entire operations agenda to 4A? Is that the request or just a specific senior?
Yeah, just move it all up there. We don't have very much else.
All right. We have a motion to move the operations committee report.
Well, we could move it to 6A, Mr. Chairman, if, under committee reports.
Okay. 6A?
Yeah, 6A.
6A, before purchasing then, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move operations report under item six on the agenda and make it 6A. It'll be first. Okay. Commissioner Isabel, did you have something else, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I want to add to the operations and do it first is, actually, the mayor and myself met with the principals of Rusty Wallace Chevrolet today at 5:00, Ray Huffaker and Mark Trout, and I have a proposal from them concerning 205 Main Street.
Excellent. Were you going to give that, you want to give that during operations as well? Is that okay with full commission to hear that information? Yeah, let's make it official. Have a motion to add that to the operations to report. Have a second by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion on that item?
I'd actually like to request that we move that portion to the top. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be 6A1. Any discussion concerned? All in favor in that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, and I would still want to discuss the funding, the DOE funding for the Oak Ridge operations. I still think that's a topic we should discuss, and I'd like to put that move, the discussion on that issue under new business.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Creasy to add, under new business, DOE funding?
It's the...
TDEC.
For TDEC.
It's, yeah, the FFA, FFA Federal Facilities Agreement.
Funding.
FFA Agreement Funding.
Yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Creasy to add that under new business and seconded by, it's under new business, but seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just add a comment to that?
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Ben Pounds, the Oak Ridge reporter. He's been very alert in bringing these news to the front about disfunding and about the landfills and so forth. And he had two articles last week in the Oak Ridge concerning this, and I think that got some of our attention. And I'd like to thank him for his diligence in doing that. And I think some public discussion would be very helpful. And I'm not sure if this funding would actually affect the Claxton coal ash. So, and I think that was important to all of this commission, as well as the DOE Waste Facility.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Creasy, and thank you, Mr. Pounds. Commissioner Isabel, did you have something else? Todd? Mr. Waterman, did you have something?
Yeah, I understand that Angela Adams is based at the Oak Ridge TDEC office, and she's kind of the boots-on-the-ground overseeing the coal ash situation at Bull Run. But she is independently funded, and she could just as well work out of the Knoxville office or someplace else. So, she's not dependent on that funding for the Superfund cleanup.
Okay. Thank you for that information, Todd.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Okay. Any other additions to the regular agenda? Yes, sir.
Under purchasing, something we didn't get to discuss during that meeting was the taking over the equipment. So, I would like to add that under the purchasing.
You talking about the solid waste information?
Solid waste, mhm.
Okay.
But we should have took that up in purchasing, but I got it late.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I had some questions on that because, I mean, we can talk about it when we add it, but the way I read that, it kind of, it kind of seems as if we're going to go ahead and give an extension in the contract, and was that some of the discussion?
Well, it was, it was about actually taking ownership of the equipment.
Okay. Because I'd like for Jay and the mayor to be in tune.
And I think Jeff has got copies of that, maybe.
Yeah, I got a copy. I don't know if all the commissioners got it. Okay, so your request is to add it to purchasing?
For discussion.
Okay. Discussion, under purchasing, for solid waste. And that's for accepting the equipment. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Any other items to add to the regular agenda? Okay. All in favor, the agenda is amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the public hearing report. Vice Chairman Anderson, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had two public hearings. First one was regarding the rezoning of the property located at 1127 Oliver Springs Highway in Clinton. We heard from a couple of the neighbors in the audience who wanted, maybe at least, at the very least, to delay and some changes to how we contact neighbors. And Commissioner McCamey and Commissioner White, who represent that area, seemed like they were willing to maybe kind of have a meeting with the neighbors and the new property owner to try to figure out what's going in that property.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the residents that came to speak to us during the consent agenda period to simply say that your voice does matter, and I do appreciate that you have brought your concerns to us. Being that Commissioner Creasy and I are the representatives for those residents that came forward, I think it's important that I speak up for them and ask that that particular motion for it to be approved be deferred for 30 days, allowing the new process to go through. And that they reach out to the residents further than just that property and/or surrounding it, being the current owners' family members, but that the other residents be considered as well.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion?
To defer.
To defer. And we have a second. All in favor? Oh, wait, 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 what's that? Excuse me. Go ahead. That's what you're talking about, Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yep.
I've got, if I may, I've got the name and the phone numbers of these folks, and we'll set up a meeting and we'll notify the commission. Anybody that wants to come, we'll, we'll work this out. And the only reason I'm wanting to do this is down on Mahoney Road, we're in an issue down there where there's a lot of turmoil and misunderstanding, so we want to get this right. We want to make an improvement down here, but we want to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. So, we have a deferral for that opportunity for, to meet and then come back to the body. Is everybody good with that? Commissioner McCamey?
It's strange because most of the residences are in Commissioner Scott's district, but the property is in mine and jury's district, so, you know, it's borderline there. It splits right there.
Well, and unfortunately, there's got to be a line somewhere, and you're on one side, which is, you're correct, the commercial side, and we're on the residential side. But I only think that it's fair that these residential property owners have a voice. So, I'm asking that it be put out.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. The second public hearing we had was regarding an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution. And Jay explained to us what those changes would entail, which includes sending the certified letters out to the contiguous property owners and also possibly adjusting the signage size.
Have a motion, Commissioner Mead?
Motion to approve.
As presented?
As presented, and in note, this is a big improvement from where we were. If we decide we want to tweak it a little bit later, we can do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Second by Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes the public hearing report.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Great job. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, we are going to committee reports. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Fritz, I apologize, sir.
I have a lot of comments, you know, I think, talking about how hard and difficult it is to do anything in Anderson County. And we are making great movement here, improvements to the zoning things. We're trying to get the, you know, the public notified and things of that nature. This is a good step, move forward, anything like that. Let's, you know, when we do it, let's make sure that we don't go, make, look at, and keep, make it more, more difficult on the people trying to do business in this county. Because we were talking about how we need to increase the revenue in the county by adding more businesses and adding more retail and things like that. And a lot of the things I'm hearing from people is how difficult, how many, how hard we're making it on people. Let's not, let's do it right, but let's not make it too hard on the folks to where they discourage them to want to do business in Anderson County. So, I mean, this is a good step where we need to notify the people, but let's not keep branching out into where we make, send more and more letters further out, you know. People who are close, it's good. But let's make sure that we don't make it too difficult where we discourage folks from wanting to do business in Anderson County, because we got to, you know, increase this revenue base.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Good comments. Okay. Next, committee reports is going to be item A1. Rusty Wallace. 6A1. Apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The mayor and I met with the principals of Rusty Wallace Chevrolet today, Ray Huffaker and Mark Trout. And that was based upon part of the radio program today that you were on there, and you did a great job there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
And just reached out and got the necessary people to set up an impromptu, very quick meeting with the principals of that corporation. And this is what was said. And after a meeting with those people, I've had a definite change of, change of heart about the way that thing's done, and some of that came from some of your suggestions about a possible TIF, you know, how we've been doing TIFs lately. Meeting with Mr. Huffaker and Mr. Trout, and the mayor, you know, may want to add to this, but one of the first things they talked about is being in Anderson County and being in Clinton and being the focal point where they're at on the corner, and that they really appreciate that. They like that, and they are going to stay in Clinton. They have no desire to move. They want to build on that. The collision center that they have there now is the collision center for all of their lots. For everything that they do, it all comes to Anderson County and becomes a point of sale. So, if they're doing something for something, one of their lots in Knoxville, and it comes to Anderson County, Anderson County's getting the sales revenue off that. They talked very favorably about the Clinton school system, their desire to support the Clinton school system and how much that they see that that's needed and support the Clinton community. They talked about what they would do with the building itself. Their intention is not to demolish the building. Their intention is to actually redo the building. And there would be substantial costs there that they're willing to do that, and they're willing to pay for Phase 1. And this would all be tentative to the Phase 1 environmental going through being okay. Now, the mayor's already done one type of environmental, and it's on the inside, and it's passed. But what their intention is, and this is the things that I was talking to them about, if we sell that to them, it's at their original bid of 300,000. They wouldn't budge. They said that was bidder bid the whole time. They never did at any point bid, bid anymore. They didn't bid 580 either. But what they're talking about doing is investing into that building and do, we can do a return on investment on what they're willing to do in their new sales, okay? So, it's not just taking that building down and making a parking lot out of it. So, when that building is redone and they're doing more sales out of there, there is the way that we make our money back up, just like doing a TIF, which you talked about today. So, that kind of gave me an idea there. Now, they're willing to sit down and talk with us, and I told them that I've always been opposed to taking a loss. But after I sat down and actually talked to these gentlemen and seen what their desires for Clinton and for Anderson County were, and for the amount of money that they're willing to invest in making that a better building, I can see that where we're going to make potentially a lot of retail sales revenue. So, their bid is for 300,000 to, you know, to stay at that, but they are willing to, you know, we could work with them to return on investment about their potential sales and what they're going to do out of it. But they're definitely going to redo the building, and they spend a lot of money on the building they've got now. But that's how that, how that was.
Thank you, Commissioner Isabel. We have a motion. Mayor, would you want to add anything?
I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion?
No.
Okay. Not putting that on you, huh? Mayor's coming up, we'll let her.
I think Commissioner Isabel covered it all, although they would accept the expense commissioned. They're not asking commissioned to fund the environmental, the Phase 1 environmental. So, that would be on them. And they, the portion of the building that they plan to utilize would be the barrel portion, and the outside would come down, because those are just kind of added on. But that, they want to maintain that historical structure that's been, you know, there for a long time, so.
So, what's needed from the commission? Commissioner, go ahead and...
I think just authorization for me to allow them to do that Phase 1 environmental.
Which they're going to pay for themselves.
They will pay for.
I made a motion to do that.
Let me get Commissioner Mead first, and I'll come back to you.
Mike, I was going to comment that it sounds like a fine idea to have somebody pay for that because it needs to get done regardless, and if someone else will pay, that's good.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner White, your motion is to...
To approve the go-ahead of the mayor to the Phase 1.
Phase 1 for Rusty Wallace to pay for the environmental cost.
Yes.
We had a second by Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Waddell?
Well, before we get started, before we get, I guess, the cart in front of the horse, I don't, maybe Jay can answer this question. I think we had a bid that was higher than that from the auction before. Is that not correct?
We did.
Yeah, but he backed out.
No, but we had a second bid that was behind him that was... No, but we had a second bid that was behind him that was still higher than this bid.
Um, they, uh, my understanding in talking to bear was that secondary buyer wasn't interested either. So, um, both of those, uh, I guess, did not have the resources to put into the building. So.
This just seems like we spent a whole lot of time selling a building and it never gets sold and the price just keeps going down and down. Just to remind everybody, this is, this is a 615, $620,000 investment plus interest that was taken on by the previous commission. I, I don't know how we can sit here and, and even entertain a thought of letting someone do an environmental when we're not going to accept $300,000 for the building. We, we've turned down more than that already. So, I'm, I'm a no.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Any other comments?
If, if commission likes, I could also put together some type of, I know some information is confidential and I do want to know that we did explain to the principals at Rusty Wallace that there still is purchasing law. So, just because we're talking a number doesn't mean that we're allowed to do that. It would still require, and I know Catherine would, would follow through with that and Jay would as well. It still would require the purchasing laws be abided by and a sealed bid process. But I can put together a, um, return on investment, um, if you would like. That, uh, facility has, uh, I think they've proven that they can take something that didn't look the best and they turned it into something wonderful and, um, that could be an asset there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mead?
Although the price is not what we're looking for, having a major improvement to a building right here on Main Street and also a very significant revenue of sales taxes and other business taxes, uh, this is no different than us doing a TIF. Uh, we're, we're just giving, we're giving them, but we're giving them a little break on the price because for, quite honestly, we've tried and that's all, that's probably all we're going to get regardless. And if we, in the meantime, get a guarantee that it's going to be done in a good way, it's going to look great and it's going to generate a very strong local business that pulls in business from the counties around us, uh, that, that is probably worth doing and it substantially reduces the impact of the mistake we made buying the building. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Um, Commissioner Waddell?
I'm sorry for not saying this earlier, but thank you for letting me speak again.
No apology needed, sir.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mead brought up a, a valid point, um, about the mistake that was made. But the mistake that was made, um, if we accept $300,000 for this, we still owe. It's not like we're not going to owe for this building. We still owe the, the debt of 615 or 620,000 dollars plus interest. So, um, this is a substantial amount of money. So, to lose, we're losing it, guys, and, and we're still going to be paying for it. We're, we're selling the property and we're still going to have to pay for the building.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Let's keep, keep in mind, this motion is just to do the environmental phase. We haven't accepted any offers. We haven't, uh, talked about any, I mean, we've talked about pricing, but this motion is to allow Rusty Wallace to do a environmental assessment at their own cost and then that would come back to this body to take further action if we take further action. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, is, is the sense from that maybe the mayor or Commissioner Isabel got from, from Rusty Wallace? Are they, is there any sense that what the environmental study produces is that, could that have an impact on their $300,000 offer? Do you think there's any chance that they might decide, we don't want to put 300,000 in?
I, I think the big concern, well, if, if I may answer that.
Sure.
Uh, I think the big concern was if there was storage tanks in the ground. I told them that I didn't think so because we've never had to fill out any reports, you know, yearly reports, but I, I couldn't say that conclusively. I think that, that's their big issue is to make sure that there's not, you know, any spills there that, uh, or there's some other tanks in the ground that may have to be removed. But that doesn't mean that they wouldn't still go ahead and buy it. Is, that means that they would know what they're up against. I mean, they're, 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 they're interested in it, but they know they're going to spend a lot of money.
Good question. Thank you for the response. Commissioner Creasy?
The way I'm understanding, uh, the discussion is we're under no obligation to sell if we pass this motion. I've spoken against selling the property in the past and I'm very tempted to vote against this for that same reason, but, um, if there's no obligation to sell, I would go along with my fellow commissioners, uh, although I'm, you know how I feel about selling. I, I think we'd be letting our citizens down again. So, that's, that's my point. But I'll support my fellow commissioners if there's no guarantee that this requires a sale.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Creasy. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. I don't have a problem with anybody going in and doing a test if they're interested in purchasing the property. I want to see those results. If it turns out that there's no problems or something they can wash up with a rag with bleach on it, I want to know. If there's an issue there, I think we should know about that as well. But there's, I don't think there's any harm in allowing someone to go in there to see if there is a problem with the facility that they have a, a true interest in. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
Uh, yeah, I could, if, oh.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Isabel.
Yeah, to, to answer her statement is I think they did offer those reports to the mayor at no charge.
I think it's a great idea to work with our businesses locally and I, I think it could be a potential fit. I appreciate Commissioner Isabel and the mayor going out and speaking with Rusty Wallace. And, uh, I think it, you know, I'm just one commissioner, but I think it's, it's good to work with them and, uh, get that property. I mean, 300,000 versus 600,000, I mean, yeah, it's not a good investment. I'm one commissioner and I'll say it again, it was a bad decision at the time. I thought it was a great decision when I made it, uh, but to get the money reinvested, create some more jobs, get that property moving, that'll help me along the way with these seniors out here and I can, uh, put my money where my mouth at and support the seniors. Uh, and I, and what the other commissioners do, it's up to you, but, uh, I think this is a good move. So, right now, we're only obligated to an environmental assessment paid by, uh, Rusty Wallace and we appreciate that. So, let's go to a board vote for that. Yes is to approve, uh, for Rusty Wallace to do an environmental assessment at their cost. No? No is not.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman, if things quit.
Yeah, won't let them, uh, vote. We, we can do a vote. You want us to do a voice vote? Roll call vote? Uh, how long is this going to take you, Brian?
Hit you then.
Hit you. He's, he's got a backup here. He's prepared. Thank you, Brian. Uh, 14 yes, one no, motion passes. Okay. We'll continue on operations portion, Commissioner Isabel, sir.
A motion made by Commissioner McCamey to forward a full commission without a recommendation to approve and ask the mayor, finance director and law director to come up with a sales agreement for the Mariner Point Building. Law director prepare a sales agreement. The mayor and finance director come up with a funding option presented at the next county commission meeting. Motion seconded by Commissioner Mead, motion passed.
What page are we on, Commissioner Scott?
168.
Hold on, let me get there. 168. Okay, I apologize, Commissioner Isabel. Um, so, we're on page 168, first action item, uh, senior center cost comparisons. If you don't mind, I'll read that again.
Go right ahead.
Uh, so, that's senior center cost comparison of the Armory Building and Mariner Point Building. Presentation by Mayor Frank upon motion by, by Commissioner McCamey to forward full commission without a recommendation to approve and asked mayor, finance director and law director to come up with a sales agreement for the Mariner Point Building. The law director to prepare a sales agreement. The mayor and finance director to come up with a funding option and present it at the next county commission meeting. Motion seconded by Commissioner Mead, motion passed. Uh, so, here we are at the next meeting.
It did, as, as you see under that, there's actually like there's three different motions in there. So, I'll go ahead and continue to read because that was so convoluted at the time.
Wait, hang, hang on, let me, if you don't mind. I don't want to cut the commissioners off. Commissioner Scott, did you have a question on?
I, I don't mind if he goes ahead and continues.
Okay. Commissioner McCamey, did you have something to add or you want to let him finish off those other ones?
I was going to make a motion, but let him go ahead and explain.
Yeah, because his next one...
Cause it's three different motions.
Yeah. Let's, let's let him read them all three, cause, and then we'll come back to the questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Isabel, I apologize.
Commissioner Jameson made a motion for the mayor to offer $450,000 for the property. Motion was seconded by Commissioner McCamey and motion passed. The next part of that was motion was made by Commissioner Jaeger to accept the amount of money in the building fund and from the pledges expected to be received, be used for the purchase of the Mariner Point Building. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Mead, motion passed. So, what we actually have there is, is we've got all these things tied up into, to one thing and we discussed the funding of the building in our finance committee. And I think that's going to be maybe discussed under the finance report, how to do that. If the motion was passed to, to, to actually buy the building, uh, Commissioner Jameson made the, the motion to offer 450 and that passed and to be sent full commission. And then for the money that they've already collected to be used. So, there's several things there. So, whatever your pleasure is, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Um, firstly, I'd like to point out that this has been bouncing back and forth between two committees. It's been spoken about over in operations and things are being worked up over there, whereas over on budget, we're talking about the money side of things and it's a completely opposite, um, discussion. However, I did promise, um, a, a resident who resides in Mariner Point that I would bring some points of discussion up to everyone's attention. One of the issues that some of the residents have in this area being Mariner Point is that there's no traffic signal at the entrance to Mariner Point. Turning into or out of Mariner Point onto a busy four-lane highway is a concern of theirs. The cost to the county and the taxpayers is a concern when other options might be available for, for the property itself, where they would be, um, utilizing a facility for the seniors. Uh, they want to know, has there been a poll been taken? Has there been a poll taken of the persons that now use the senior center to see if they would have transportation to Mariner Point? And that's keeping in mind that it's now approximately four and a half miles down the road from where they're currently located and it's even further from Bryceville and, and Rocky Top, where a lot of the residents in that particular area are looking to, uh, utilize the facility. It's further distance. They'd like to know if there's been a poll taken of the residents of Mariner Point to assess the concerns about additional traffic at the only entrance and exit to their subdivision, which approximately, um, houses, there is, are 300, over 300 houses, um, or residences out there. Again, I'm speaking on behalf of people that have come to my, um, attention and ask that there's people in Mariner Point that don't want a senior center at the entrance of their residential community. They don't want the additional traffic in and out, like I said, with regards to there not being a traffic signal and safety issues. And I think we need to look at the other offer that we've had from the city of, of Clinton at the same time. At this time, I'm voting no on all of this. I don't, I think we're just doing a knee-jerk reaction and it's like Commissioner Waddell said during our budget committee meeting. He said, "We've already sold 205 Main twice and we still own it." So.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Let's keep in mind, we don't have a motion on the floor. Uh, Commissioner McCamey?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to ask the mayor to come up and explain to us, uh, because our motion was for her and the, um, finance director to come up with a funding, with funding options, and I would like to hear that, uh, if we have, you know, if she has a recommendation for us.
So, maybe it would might make sense, Commissioner McCamey, if you'd like for us to, and Commissioner Isabel of operations to, to accept this first motion, which you're referring to from the operation, which she'll come up and tell us and explain all this to us. Again, it doesn't say we're going to buy a building. It, it just, so, would we like to do that as a body, accept this first motion?
I didn't understand the motion exactly.
Well, the first motion that I read earlier and Commissioner Isabel wrote, read it, I'll read it again. It's, and this is kind of what Commissioner McCamey said. He made the motion. Upon motion made by Commissioner McCamey to, to forward a full commission without a recommendation to approve and asked the mayor, finance director and law director to come up with a sales agreement for the Mariner Point Building. The law director prepare a sales agreement. The mayor and finance director to come up with a funding option and present it to the next county commission meeting, which is this meeting. Motion seconded by Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion? Is that your motion, Mr. Commissioner? We have a motion to approve that motion from the operation. We have a second by Commissioner Creasy. Any discussion on that motion as presented? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
No.
Uh, no, Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Waddell? Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Mayor, would you like to come up now or you want to? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up, please.
Okay. I actually walked off without the right packet, but Robbie has, uh, from finance. Um, if you look at what we're actually paying in lease right now, we're paying $18,000 a year that, uh, to use space. Um, we're talking about reducing the senior budget by $18,000 a year, um, and applying that to, uh, debt instead of paying a lease payment. And so, essentially, that, that's over halfway there. Thank you, Robbie. Then also, um, as we're doing a, a new upgrade, um, it, on the agenda with ESG, um, we had been in contract with Johnson Controls for basically monitoring. And with them on site now doing that work, we can cancel that. So, we have 11 more payments totaling $123,369. Uh, that averages out to $11,215 a year. So, that leaves us, um, $2,562 short. So, if commission agrees to shift, uh, 1.75 pennies for the ESG project, those are savings that are coming from ESG that'll be shifted out of those funds and applied to that debt service. Um, it should be more than enough to pay for the additional cost of the senior building. And in addition, uh, when we were looking at refunding and refinancing, um, the, uh, debt on the, the general fu, or general debt service... general fund, or general debt service, we've also got on the agenda tonight rural elementary high school. We looked at those in the finance committee and we have a positive recommendation for those. It's going to save the county a lot of money, but we did not include in there the refunding of that note for the general sessions court or the senior building so that we could handle that separately and apply any proceeds to that particular debt. In addition, when I was talking to Scott about this, we asked for a separate amortization schedule for the senior center if this purchase went through so that when they apply their 40,000 that they have in pledges and that they have in the bank, that when that gets applied, we'll be able to see that debt tick down and then if they want to continue to have fundraisers to pay it off early to save interest on that program, they can. But essentially, you're looking at those, moving that 18,000 out of their budget, putting that over into debt service instead of lease payment and then the savings on that monitoring pretty much gets us there.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner?
Oh, yes. And if you do combine, if we, and I don't want to marry the two issues, but when we do look at the ESG project and the refinancing, there are economies of scale in dealing with bond counsel and going to market and all the work that's required in going to market. It makes it the opportune time to actually save some money in that regard if we bundled it in there.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Mead?
Well, this, I was on there because I was going to talk about something else, but I'm really in favor of going ahead with this project. And there was some talk about the traffic like the Mariner Point. Is that significantly worse than the traffic like turning into the current senior center? Absolutely not. The traffic for the users is better than the current location. There was in fact a poll of users, I talked to the people that ran that and they found that the users, they've yet found anybody that is opposed to the Mariner Point location because it's a few more miles to drive. I'm sure if you searched enough, you could find somebody that would rather it be closer. I was kind of hoping it would be more close to the center of Clinton than it is, but that didn't work out that way. Poll of residents, I know is that every single correspondence I have received from people in Mariner Point, and there were just handful, okay, but every one I received was in favor of the senior center being there, was asking me to please support it. The 18K for the rent going towards the purchase is certainly, I think, a big factor. And really, the big thing to me is the Mariner Point location is move-in ready, okay? The National Guard location could not, potentially not be available until 2022. It also is, it's also going to require a substantial amount of improvements before it can be brought up to standards. And you know, one of the things about when you start really improving a building, you go beyond a certain point, you have to meet all the current codes and that can end up being very expensive. I would also point out that Oak Ridge recently opened a senior center costing over, costing over $2 million, according to Warren Gooch. And I think that the seniors in Anderson County deserve something that's better than a closet that they're living out of right now with one bathroom. Thank you.
All right. And let's just keep in mind, right now, we're just, we don't have a motion to purchase. We don't have a motion to, you know, we can sit here and debate and talk about all the things that's been talked about in finance, all the things that's talked about in operations, but our job here as commissioners is to move the business forward and if we don't, if we're not prepared to make a motion to take action, right now, we're on this motion that Chairman Isabel spoke of. The mayor's given us some ideas on how to finance it. We've all hopefully taken that information. Obviously, we didn't have that information. She's given it to us tonight. So, you know, there may be some around this table. I'd like to go ahead and pull the trigger on that based on that information and that's your conscience, but you have to have all the information. The Rusty Wallace isn't a done deal, so that's another piece, but, so, what we're doing is we're getting information from the operations committee and we're making decisions on it. I really do not want us sitting around the table debating and us start to fuss with each other about, well, this is a better, this is that. I mean, let's make good business decisions on behalf of the county, on behalf of the seniors, and let's move forward. It doesn't, I think everyone wants, who here doesn't want a new senior center? Raise your hand. Nobody, I mean, we all want a new senior. I think that's why some of us that was on the commission that bought 205 Main made that decision, even though it wasn't a good decision. We made decision based on the idea that it was a great decision. It went the other way. I understand, things happen. So, I like this, we're getting the information to make sure when we do make the next decision, it's going to be done correctly and so, I'm not trying to dissuade anybody, we just need to move on and get some motions. So, we've already addressed the mayor's ideas on financing. If you've got any questions to the mayor about the financing, let's talk about that and any other thing she's mentioned. Commissioner McCamey?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and purchase the Faith Promise Church building using the model that the mayor has put forth for funding. It doesn't require any new taxes. It gives us that and then we can deal with the 205 South Main at a later date and maybe even apply that money some way, but I would make the motion that we go ahead and purchase the building.
If you don't mind, I mean, I'd like to, we had some of these other commissioners' buttons pushed and we can come back to that. Let me ask Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Meredith, Commissioner Creasy, did you want to add anything before we take action on Commissioner McCamey's motion?
Yeah, we're questioning the mayor about her comment.
Okay, that's, okay. So, if it's okay, Commissioner McCamey, I'd like to let them ask those questions on the financing that she's been discussing that was...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Let's also, let's try to keep comments to one person that are put by our rules because we've got a lot on the agenda tonight.
Yes, we do.
We'll be here early in the morning if not.
That was my intent today is to make sure tonight as we move forward, but, and I appreciate it, Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner... Did you push for a motion?
Yes, I pushed for a motion while I go. My motion was exactly the same as just made, so I would then second that motion.
Okay. Let's let Commissioner Scott go and then Commissioner Meredith, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. So, Mayor, you mentioned lease payments.
Mm-hmm.
Who would actually own the building? Is it the county or the seniors?
Anderson County.
And with that being said, who pays for the insurance on the property and the building?
Anderson County.
And then, who pays for the roof that needs to be fixed if it should come that there's a leak or wall falls down or the parking lot needs to be repaved?
Well, Anderson County, but there are many things also as well that the senior program has achieved through donations when it comes to repairing their facility, maintaining their facility. So, Roger, they do their own cleaning there, as an example. That's not handled through our maintenance and buildings and grounds department. So, these folks are very industrious when it comes to reaching out to the community.
The reason why I'm asking is because we lease the buildings to the volunteer fire departments, but if the roof needs to be replaced, it's up to the volunteer fire department. If they have facilities in that building that need to be repaired or modified, it's up to those volunteers or that department to fix it. So, that's why I was asking.
Sure.
Who's responsible?
Well, they do not have funding in their, if you look at their budget, they do not have funding for capital maintenance. So, if there are ever any issues that would come up, it would be up to county commission to either ask them to do it themselves or to fund it. So, it would be handled through the appropriation process, through the budget committee process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Meredith?
Before I ask, Mr. Chairman, I have questions for the mayor as well as questions on the motion for other comments. Is it okay?
Absolutely, that's, that's good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, are you, I don't want to put you in, but what if we just paid for the building out of the general fund? Is that an option or would you rather just borrow the money?
Well, the general, I mean, I'm always big on protecting the general fund, so...
Well, would you consider that as an option, not putting you on the spot?
What is the general fund balance right now, Robbie? I mean, it's an option. I mean, I've been trying, I would like to see us get to $5 million fund balance, so...
So, the other comments I want to make, I live in Mariner Point, so, and I shared with this lady right here today, spoke to her for about 20 minutes. Misinformation, some misinformation, she's been informed. And that's fine, but I do live there. It's tough to turn left. I've lived there for 20-plus years. It is turned, that's not a deterrent. It is tough to turn left, period. But I have, several residents have called me and it's probably two to one against and for and that's okay, too. My questions are to, I guess, Chairman Isabel or to you, Mr. Chairman. The operations committee never considered the city's proposal? I'm just, I'm just asking. I don't know, I was not there, so...
Unfortunately, I was absent as well and I'll let the chairman of the operations speak to that.
Mayor Burton made a proposal. There was never a motion to accept his proposal, but there was discussion. So, all the motions was made entirely around the Faith Promise.
Correct. So, and I understand the action that was taken, but as long as it was fit, so, did the city point out that they're willing to pay for the roof, HVAC, and the restrooms to redo all that and the county would only have a cost of 133.7? I got that from the mayor today. I'm just making sure that that proposal was pitched to operations.
They did and we had it in writing and at one point, I think it said that it would be like 1.3 million was the total.
But I think if you read that proposal, a lot of, there's some inaccuracies in that proposal.
Exactly. I agree.
Or different costs that's not necessary for the building. I just wanted to make sure the city was, had their chance to present their proposal because there's a big difference in a half a million dollars and 133, except we would own one and we wouldn't own the other.
That's correct. We just didn't get a motion to support that.
So, if I understand the current action that you're referring to, it says the motion is pending the mayor and finance to come up with a way to pay for it. Is that, am I correct? So, my question to the chair is, why would that not go back to the, to the budget committee? Because the mayor was gracious enough to give us the cost analysis. There was a couple of pieces of information wasn't in that cost analysis. She did bring it to budget. We didn't take action, it's in your minutes tonight, but yet, it went to finance and we're ready to do a bond tomorrow, which that's fine. We have options. But my colleagues and I'll yield to the chair of budget, we never seen an option. So, to me, if we're going to follow our rules, operations should have sent it back to budget. That's to, because if I understand the, what you're saying, it's going to come back to the January commission meeting anyhow. Is that not correct for approval? Is that the way I understood it to be said?
No, it was to purchase the building using the model.
The finance would have to come back to budget, to this commission.
It's already been to finance and it's been to budget twice and it's been to operations twice.
Budget never had the information, Mr. Chairman.
I understand and this, a motion that we have approved from the operations, we've read it four or five times, it clearly states without a recommendation to approve. You know, I think to get back to your point, you know, at the end of the day, the mayor, in my opinion, did not get much of a say-so in the first acquisition of 205 Main. You know, I think I asked her a few questions before I voted yes. She gave me her responses. I think we had same, some of the same concerns, the hills, access, handicap, but, you know, for me, I want to hear the mayor say to this body what she wants in the senior center, where she, this isn't our choice. Our choice is to fund. That's it. I mean, we can ask all the questions all day long, but at the end of the day, the mayor is going to make a recommendation to this body on what's best for the seniors, for our county and a senior center. It's the mayor's responsibility and I'm not being rude or crude, it's her department and I learned from the first mistake on the first one. So, this one, if the mayor stands there tonight and says, "I want to buy Faith Promise for X amount and this is the way I'm going to fund it," I'm going to hear what she has to say and I'll make my decision. But to your point, it hasn't been the budget apparently and the budget committee has not, and I don't know what Commissioner McCamey's talking about, it's been there twice and I'm not debating him. I mean, I'll hear what he has to say, so, that's just my two cents and go ahead and continue and I'll come back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with everything and you're correct. The mayor gave us a cost, she never asked for, and she's standing here, she can, I didn't understand her to say, "We're going to buy this, let's figure out how to fund it."
Right.
And if I'm wrong, she can tell the chair. I mean, I saw the cost analysis and no action was taken. Was it before budget committee? Absolutely. I disagree with that, it's in your minutes.
That's all it needs to do. Our rule.
Anything else, Commissioner Meredith?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Creasy, sir?
The mayor mentioned that she's going to reduce the, well, she can reduce the budget or the financing to the senior center by 18,000 a year. Is that the Portwood, would lease payment that you're considering, with, other words, we wouldn't be paying that lease payment? I guess, I'm assuming that that 18,000 is that lease payment for the Portwood building.
Yes, sir. And to Commissioner Meredith's point, because we were doing this financing package with, you know, any interest is interest, but it's very cheap money at this moment in time and this time in history. And Robbie even went and looked at the ESG financing from the schools project last time and the preliminaries were 3.75 and we're in the twos looking at this project. So, I just thought, you know, given some of the large capital expenditures that we had just made, let's look at it to the financing aspect, but we could certainly make those payments to the general fund instead of, you know, just do a, reduce the budget and we don't fund them and count it towards a payoff in addition to the funds that they've raised. So, we could do that either way.
When I heard you say that, knowing that that's what we pay Portwood each month, I think $1,500 a month. If we were to go to the Armory, we would also reduce the senior budget by that amount or if we were to go to 205 again, we would reduce by the same amount.
Yes. Now, with 205, we would, and if that's what commission wants, I mean, I've done preliminary on what it would cost to rehab that facility and it's considerably more than what we're looking at in purchasing a facility that has decades of life left on it. The largest concern about the Armory, I mean, if we wanted to purchase and then we get to a time in the future when the Armory is actually available and Roan State has expired their lease agreement and they move into a new facility and some of the improvements are ready, there is nothing prohibiting us from selling our existing property, you know, the property at Faith Promise or converting it to another government use that would maintain a partnership with Faith Promise. But the largest concern I have for the Armory is the ongoing cost of maintenance and operation. If you look at the average electric bill alone, it's more than we're paying in a lease payment right now. So, that will require an investment from Anderson County in order to help them just operate the facility. That doesn't include, you know, the gas and the water and any issues that come up. Now, Mayor Burton did address the operations committee with what he felt were the lower costs that we could use to get in the Armory facility in the 2021 timeframe. However, in negotiating with the city manager and Scott did say that was part of the agreement, whatever the manager said, the agreements currently with Roan State and the previous agreements with the Anderson County school system have a 50-50... the agreements currently with Roan State and the previous agreements with the Anderson County School System have a 50-50 expectation for any issues that arise that require an investment, or those costs are split 50-50. Uh, and the armory proposal, those construction estimates also did not cover the cost of a kitchen, that wasn't, because to the city, that doesn't, that's not part of their upkeep. Bringing the bathroom up to ADA standards would be a, a shared goal with the city of Clinton, but putting in a kitchen is not.
Like I said at the operations meeting, you and Robert have gone a long way and have worked real hard, and it made it very difficult for anyone to oppose your recommendation. You've done a good job doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Mayor, before I take on a, a motion here, I'd like to ask you if it's okay.
Yes.
What is your recommendation to this body that you'd like to ask for, as it relates to the senior center?
Sure. Um, I would like to see Anderson County purchase this facility for the senior program, and also if there are other government functions, such as a public meeting or government meeting that could be held in there, and, um, I've actually expressed this to some commissioners individually. If it weren't illegal, I would somehow find a way to borrow the money myself for this facility and let the seniors lease it for, you know, just make the payment, but I would get frogmarched to jail. Um, but I, I, um.
I believe you'd be bonded up pretty quick. So, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but your recommendation is to buy the Faith Promise location?
I, I just, and, and I want to tell you just a very few reasons why I've made this academic and business decision. The cost that they are offering this facility to Anderson County is considerably lower than the appraised value, and I did distribute that appraisal to county commission. So in my mind, whether we sell 205 or not, we're at a break-even point, and especially if you take into account interest, we're at a break-even point. So to, to me, in my mind, that, that is a wash. We put ourselves ahead by purchasing a building for a suppressed value that's done out of generosity from Faith Promise because they want to help Anderson County, they want to help the seniors.
And, and you feel we're ready to make that decision in your mind tonight? I'm listening.
With, i, if you do the contract, and the contract would allow me to finish the process, I think that is important, that we do the rest of the process, which is a sales contract, no money down, if, if Faith Promise is willing to sign that, but to give us the remainder of the time to do the due diligence, which is a survey, um, the, the, the title insurance. Uh, we have an inspection, which I need to go over with them.
So that would be in my mind, and again, I'm not trying to cut you off, but we, as Chair, Commissioner Fritz said, we do have a lot of stuff on agenda, I'm not, I'm not trying to cut it short at all, but that would probably be the proper motion.
Yes, that would be the proper motion.
To do, to have all these things done, and purchase agreement put together, not necessarily, and, and again, any commissioner can make any motion they want, but the motion should not be to purchase it, period. I mean, because you have all these things that have to be done. So a proper motion would be to outline all the things you said, correct?
Well, I think you have to enter into a sales agreement with the understanding with them that we have the intention to purchase.
But we don't have a sales agreement.
But we have, uh, you have one in your agenda.
From J.
From J.
Have you reviewed it?
Yes, sir.
Does it look up to snuff?
The only thing that's missing are some days, um, that we could leave up to commission, if you want to put 60 days, 90 days, what we could take back to, uh, Faith Promise, that line is left blank, and it does not have a closing date in there either, um, so.
Santa Claus is coming, I can hear him. Well.
But that protects the interests of the county, it says, says to Faith Promise we want it.
What I don't want to happen is what we did last time.
Yes.
Some commissioner's sitting up here going, "I make a motion, we buy it." Well, based on what? Uh, just a good feeling thing? I mean, let's have all of our Ps and Qs, which you're saying needs to be done.
And I will take full responsibility for making sure all of those are, are done.
So we can make a, we can, perhaps a commissioner can make a motion that's based on the purchase agreement being completed to satisfaction by you and the law director with the other parameters you outlined, the title search and, and.
That's all part of the sales contract.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, I appreciate the conversation, because otherwise, we'll keep having discussions on all these other extracurricular things, and, and so I'm gonna be quiet now, and Commissioner Mead's next, and Commissioner Mead, I see you have a motion.
My motion that I made, the, what you just said is the, was the intent of my motion, that we move ahead with the process to buy the lo, the, the location at Mariner Point. I will point out, in accordance with Tennessee law, all county properties are owned, operated, purchased, and sold by the county commission. So we are, in fact, responsible for all county properties. I would point out that the, the real, my big concern about the guard armory thing, because that was, that started to sound good until the, the mayor of Clinton made it clear, it may not be available till 2022, and I just think that that's too long. And the fact that we now have a, an up-to-date, current appraisal of that property, and it's worth substantially more than what we're being asked to pay for it, my motion, though, is to pay the, is to go ahead and pay the, the full asking price.
What is that full asking price, Commissioner Mead?
$500,000.
So.
Well, there'd been a vote in operations to offer them less, uh, but when seeing they're offering us the property at hundreds of thousands below the appraised value, I think it would be kind of an insult to not offer them their offer that they made very graciously and charitably to the county.
Okay, I believe Commissioner Mead's motion was to acquire the property at the full asking price, which, wh, which.
To move ahead with the contract process.
What, what is the last motion we have on the floor? I apologize, I'm getting lost here. Just to purchase it?
Well, to go ahead and sign the sales contract, I mean, we have to get a contract, we've got until tomorrow. Faith Promise has given us until tomorrow, and they're gonna put it back on the market if we don't let them know something tomorrow. We, we've dealt with this for over three months now, since they made the initial offer, and it was brought to the full commission, and then it was referred to budget, and then it was referred from there to operations, and it came back to budget after we asked the mayor to get all the pros and cons, and then budget sent it back to operations.
We have, we have a motion to purchase it, that's your motion, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Mead. Is there any questions on that motion? Commissioner Isbell, did you have a question on the motion?
No, sir.
Commissioner Jameson, did you have a question on the motion?
I have to say two things. You cannot compare the armory with this church building. It, the armory is 15,000 square feet.
17,000.
Okay, 17,000, it's getting bigger. It is 75 years old, it's got a lot of single-pane glass in it, uh, it's really two-story building, and you've got to heat and cool that building, and it's got a, a awful lot of repairs. And so you're not, you can't really, there's no logical comparison of the two. Now, if you want to vote down neither, either one of these places, then we'll have to go start again and, and find someplace else, which we might do that. But I don't think we need to get tied up with, uh, and it start, when it started out, it was a very, it would be nice to pay 100,000 and then pay a dollar a year for 30 years, that sounds great. But now, that first 100,000 has gone up, and also is, is, and by the way, the mayor, as somebody else said this earlier, the mayor did an excellent job of get, gathering the, the data on this, uh, both places, and I think after you look at both of these places, you can't compare them, because how do you heat and cool a 17,000 square feet building? The second thing is, they don't need that big a building, and there's no way you can divide it off and say, "We're gonna heat this and not cool this," and things of that nature.
Commissioner Jameson, the motion on the floor is to purchase the Faith Promise facility. Uh, we're, I mean, I'd be happy to let you talk longer about the other facility.
We talked, we've been talking, uh, we talked about, uh, one of the commissioners made a statement that he thought we could put in 135,000, and I was just trying to add additional information to that decision.
Understood.
And the, the other, I wanted to make two statements, I made my one, the other one is, this property is got 8,900 square feet, the church property, is that right?
Um, the mayor has told us it's 8,800 square feet.
8,800 square feet, okay, that's, that's four times as big as what they have, we have now, which I think would be very adequate. The church has had that building for sale for quite a while, and I believe they would take our offer of 450,000. But then that was why I made that motion.
Yeah, we didn't make it there yet.
I know, but I made it at the.
Yes, sir, I saw it in the minutes.
That's why I had that in there.
Yes, sir, I, I like that motion. It was sold in 2013 for 338,000. It's in the property assessors' information, so.
Uh, I've got to respond to that.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the appraisal, now the mayor got an appraisal, but before that, there was an appraisal, and it was not made by the county officials, the owner of the property made the appraisal.
Yes, sir, I'm not talking about appraisals, I'm talking about the actual purchase price of Faith Promise in 2013 was 338,000. Has nothing to do with appraisals, has to do with what somebody paid for the building and the property, they paid in 2013 338,000 for the property. That's all I'm saying about it. It's on the record, property assessors, D, you can go check it out and see it. I mean, it, it's okay, I mean, we've paid too much for property before, it's all right. Okay, there's a motion on the floor, I did promise Commissioner Fritz he had a comment, go ahead, sir, and I'll come back to you, Commissioner Isbell.
To add the, everything that the mayor, uh, said she needs to do, uh, to that motion.
It's in the sales contract.
It would be covered in the sales.
Everything is already listed on, in the sales contract?
The only thing I would need from you would be the day, the number of days you think are appropriate, so 60 days or, or 90 days to request that of Faith Promise. That's the only blank there.
Okay.
Should I amend that and say you should drop it to 60 days?
Minimize 60 days then.
I would prefer 60 myself, just, I mean, we're entering holidays and getting the title survey done, a survey done.
Yeah, I'd like to amend it then to for 60 days.
We have a motion to amend to 60 days the original motion, is there a second to that amendment?
Can I second an amendment to my motion?
We have an amendment, motion, is there a second to the amendment as presented? So we have a, we have a second.
I think I was the second, I would, I would agree to the amendment.
Okay, that's what we was looking for, is a second to the amendment. So we have the second, any discussion on the amendment change to make it 60 days? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Two noes, Commissioner Waddell, Commissioner Scott. Now, Commissioner Isbell.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the contract that you have, Mayor, what is the amount that's on that contract?
50,000, I mean 500,000.
500,000, okay, because a couple of things that, is, is it didn't go back to budget, which, you know, I'm, I'm a big supporter of all committees, and then his 450 that, but anyway, that's what I get that.
I can certainly talk to them about further partnership.
Commissioner Creasy, sir.
I'm not gonna make a motion to amend the price to 300,000. Although, that would be a good motion or a good amendment, I think, but I'm, I'm not for spending the money to buy the church. I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm not for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. All right, Commissioner Val, I gotta let him speak, he has not spoken.
I'd rather cancel it, Mr. Chairman, thank you anyway.
Okay, all right, so the motion on the floor is to purchase the Faith Promis, what is the exact motion, Kim, I want to. I believe the exact motion was to purchase the building, and there's a second to that, it wasn't even clear on what building we's purchasing, but if that's what the body would like to vote on, we'll vote on it. It did? Okay, that's why I asked what the motion say.
Is this the, is this the motion, is, because that would be the backup to the motion, this contract.
Sales contract.
Yes. We received it earlier today.
Sales contract.
All right.
I, I have, I want clear, uh, clarify, is she going to offer him 500,000, or is she gonna offer him 450,000?
This mot, this motion for the sales contract is 500,000, but I will, there is, um, there is no reason it can't go down, and I will negotiate for a lower price, but this allows up to 500,000.
But if you go in there and say, "I will give you 500,000," you're, you're negotiating.
Well, I, I mean, and they did have a meeting, I mean, that's, that was what their church committee met and offered. So I can certainly ask and express the wishes of commission.
Have a motion.
Can this commission not say that we want her to not offer less than, um, any more than 450,000?
You could, but we have a motion on the floor now.
Okay, with the 50,000.
Uh, I'll take 50,000, I'll vote yes for 50,000. But I think it's 500,000.
The 50,000 difference.
Yes, sir, it is 50,000.
This is 500,000.
Oh, I agree with you.
Okay.
So the motion is, as presented, my understanding is, is in the contract, it says 500,000, so you either vote for it or vote against it. Any other questions? We've had lots of discussion, and I appreciate everybody's patience. Any other questions? Let's go to the. Well, here, here's the problem, we have one person come up and talk from the audience, and then another person's gonna want to come up, talk from the audience. This is our deal, we have to make a decision, commission, and, well.
But you're the chair.
Well, I assume the mayor's speaking for the folks that want it to be purchased, so if there's anyone against this, come on up to the podium. How's that? Are you?
Would that be a point of order that he told the audience that they'd be allowed to speak?
Commissioner Mead, you're the pot calling the kettle black, sir, you, you, you come up with some stuff every meeting, and I don't ever say anything, but I appreciate it, but the good news is, I'm the chairman. And if you'd like a point of order. Point of order, point of order, Commissioner Mead.
I'm gonna make a motion to have you removed the chair.
You can, you can exit the building, we're not gonna tolerate this tonight, you understand?
That's what my, that's my very, we should not, we should not put up with what you're doing right now. Point of order, you told the audience they'd be allowed to speak on this, that they'd have to wait only if they're against it.
Anybody would like to come up and speak, come on up, we'll stay here to 3 o'clock in the morning, and Commissioner Mead, I'll let him slide over here and run the meeting. Would you like to do that, sir?
Are you resigning as chair? Let's just move ahead with this meeting, sir. You made a promise.
No, I'm about to take a recess for the evening, if, if you'd like that. Is there anybody out there, seniors, who'd like to come to the microphone and speak for or against the senior center? I think most of you understand we're trying to get the senior center done, okay, and I apologize for the inconvenience here. Mr. Harper, come up and state your name, your address, and speak your mind.
My name is Joe Harper, I've been a resident of Anderson County for, since 1979, and a resident of Mariner Point for the last 15 years. I'm responsible for the information that Commissioner Scott had there, because I sent out a, a post on Nextdoor Neighbor from Mariner Point, uh, of over, half of them belong on to this website, are registered on this website, and they had some input, and contrary to what, uh, Commissioner Mead, and by the way, thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
I apologize, I mean, I don't, I hate that you all have. I apologize, I mean, I hate that you all have to go through this, I mean, we should be doing our business.
And I made copies of the negative comments that they had about the traffic, et cetera, and I, and you can pass, have these if you'd like to review these, but it looked like it's been a, a done deal, and I came in prepared to say that I'm not for or against the purchase of Mariner, uh, the Faith Promise Building at Mariner Point, but due to the work of Mayor Frank and some of the other commissioners, uh, you have swayed me to the positive side, it is a beautiful building, I've been there several times on different occasions, I've also visited a various number of senior citizens, and if you want to see a good senior citizen, what, that sets the standard of what a senior citizen should and can be, visit the Halls Senior Center. Oak Ridge has a brand-new facility, and I've only been there one time, but, uh, the Halls is an exceptional facility. The thing that concerns me is the pro, the human element, not the financial, I tried to follow your math, but, and I'm not pretty good at math, but I couldn't keep up. The, um, program that's offered at senior citizen is critical, I think, and that's what's so outstanding about the Halls facility. Uh, so I, I'd hate to see you buy an expensive building and the Faith Promise looks like the best deal, but if you buy an expensive building, I hope that you'll set aside money to offer programs that can be offered, in other words, improve the, the management, the, um, the, the, um, well, pool tables, craft rooms, the other things that can be enjoyed at a senior citizen. I've been at the one, the current senior citizen, and, uh, a couple of, three times, and, uh, you're right, there's not enough space for pool tables, a bridge room, or some of the other activities that I would enjoy personally. And, uh, so I just, that's my main point, is, uh, you've already made the motion and approved it to purchase the building, I guess, and, uh, that's fine with me, but, uh...
We haven't voted yet.
Please set aside enough money to upgrade, upgrade what's offered at the senior cities.
Sorry, Mr. Harper, I, I, we haven't voted yet, but we're fixing to.
Oh, okay.
But there is a motion on the floor to acquire the building.
Okay.
I appreciate your comments.
Okay, very good, and thank you very much, and I wanna personally thank Commissioner Creasy and Commissioner, there was another one, Anderson, that responded to our email, thank you very much, you made me welcome to speak here this evening, and, and I, may I missed it, did you offer a discussion before, uh, before on some of the preliminary votes? I kept trying to get up here, but thank you for the opportunity.
Anyone at any time, far as I'm concerned, got an issue, they wanna talk about on any motion, they more than welcome to come to the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, anyone else like to come to the microphone, speak on the issue of senior center? All right. Thought Brian was gonna give us some feedback on this. Okay, let's go to the board, Brian. Yes is to acquire the building as presented in the motion, Faith Promise, no is to not. Six yes, nine noes, motion fails. Now... Mr. Chairman, back to the operations meeting, report, your next item, I believe, go ahead, sir.
So, that vote probably no.
That negates the next two.
Extreme restoration project.
Mr. Chairman, we have a gentleman here, Mike Williams, from Stan Tick, if you want him to answer questions, but I've...
Jay, Jay, just, no, it's, it's fine, seniors? Yeah, ten minutes recess, that sounds good.
For too many decades, Tennessee has ranked in the bottom ten among the least healthy states, but because thousands of people across the state are joining the movement to be more active, eat better, and reduce tobacco use, we are creating a healthier Tennessee. That movement has taken hold here in Anderson County, where a local committee has led a grassroots effort to achieve the Governor's Foundation for Health and Wellness, Healthier Tennessee, community designation.
Active Anderson was lucky enough to receive funding from the Healthier Tennessee Communities Initiative. With the support of community programs, we are looking to increase healthy physical activity, better nutrition, including run clubs and competitive track events, gardening, tobacco education, and focusing on prevention of new smokers.
This movement doesn't end with a designation, in fact, it's only building. To get involved with the Active Anderson Committee, visit facebook.com/activeandersontn.
We are ASAP of Anderson. We are celebrating 10 years of prevention powered by more than 11,000 hours given by volunteers like you. Together, we've reduced underage substance misuse in our county by 53.5 percent. Our brand has changed, but our mission remains the same: Prevention Works.
We need to finish the operations agenda. Was there anything else left, Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Stream restoration project motion was made by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, passed referred to County Commission for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the StanTech Stream Project. I've got Mike Williams here from StanTech if you need to ask him any questions. But basically, the project is free to the county. The old Braden Stream, Braden Creek that crosses, comes down Blockhouse Valley Road, crosses our property, goes into the lake there, that's the one that will get the restoration project. They're working with the private landowners along Blockhouse Valley Road to get their permission. I think they've just about acquired everyone's permission. They need our permission to work on our property. I have taken the liberty to talk to Cresso, John Byrd, and Ted Faust because they do have operations there. And I've spoken with Arcatus, Bernie Ilgner, and Laura Duncan. They're all in agreement. I would, if you do recommend this project for approval tonight, I would recommend that you put on a contingency that they work and coordinate with Cresso and with Arcatus for that. And I spoke with John Byrd, and he believes it's a great educational opportunity for the kids there that are in that Cresso group, the high school students, to work on this stream restoration project. But it is free of the county. It does not cost any money. We're just giving them permission to work on our property. Any questions on this issue? And again, Mike is the technical expertise here. He's from StanTech out of Chattanooga, and he's going to drive back tonight.
Have a motion by Commissioner Isabel to approve, sir?
With the contingency.
With the contingencies outlined by-
That you work with Cresso and also Arcatus.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Scott, you have a question?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was going to ask you about Mr. Byrd and the students as to how it would affect them.
Yes, ma'am.
But free is in our budget, gentlemen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good comments. Commissioner White, did you have something, sir? Okay. Any other questions on this issue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Yeager.
Yes, sir.
Legislative Committee Resolutions. Motion was made by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner McCamey to afford full commission for approval to bypass the Legislative Committee meeting on December 19th and to send a recommendation to General Assembly for the ability for county commissioners, judges, law enforcement officers, and other employees to carry handgun in the courthouse when judicial proceedings are in place. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, on that issue, we need to pull it. We need to pull both those firearms resolutions at this time. Commissioner Mead is still doing some research and speaking with our representatives in the General Assembly, but both the two firearms resolutions, we need to pull those for tonight. And we'll get back with you. And you think January, we should have the new resolution, Commissioner Mead? It's up to you.
Yeah, I was just going to give a very brief update, just the fact that we've talked with Dragan and other people about this. The state law, apparently according to CTAAS, already allows us to regulate the wearing of arms by our employees and contractors. And so they're saying, well, why don't you use that? And Steve Austin from CTAAS said there were no agey opinions regarding this and that we probably could go in that direction. The law is pretty clear. City, county, or town municipality may tell the government is expressively authorized to regulate by ordinance, resolution, policy, or rule the wearing of arms by their employees and contractors. And so we're going to take that route. And I got some case law that I'll give to people by email.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead.
I withdraw my motion.
Motions are withdrawn.
Sheriff's Office leases-
Excuse me, Chairman. Brought to my attention, I missed it myself, the senior center lease amendments. It was right after the stream-
Oh, yes. Yep. Motion was made by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner McCamey to refer to full commission for approval. Motion passed.
Have a motion by Commissioner Yeager to approve?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead?
Yes.
And any discussion on the senior center lease amendments as presented? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Commissioner Isabel.
Sheriff's Office leases surplus vehicles. Motion was made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager to approve?
Yes.
Sir? Seconded by Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on the motion for the sheriff's office lease of surplus vehicles?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make you aware that you have three already written in your packet, but they made a motion at operations to add Marlowe to that. Captain Sharp is still out with surgery on his foot. He'll get the VIN number and tag number, and I'll do the one for Marlowe Volunteer Fire Department at that time. But I'd like approval to do all those tonight, if possible.
Commissioner Yeager, would you allow that to be added to the motion? And the second, or Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mediation panel selection. Motion was made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed referred to County Commission without a recommendation for approval for the Law Director to form a mediation panel for the Carl Clifford Smith case.
We were ordered by the court to get mediation on this case, and I've sent you emails along the way. This is a significant amount of money that's on the line here in this case. It's a former sheriff's department employee. It goes back to 2009. But we need a panel. And I want the mayor to be involved. She's accepted it. The sheriff, I'd like him to be involved, even though it wasn't his employee. He'd be a great person to have. But I need someone, or at least one person, maybe two people, from County Commission to help negotiate this mediated settlement. I'd like the chairman to be involved, but, Mr. Chairman, I know you're in and out of town, and I don't know if we can squeeze your schedule in. But I'd love for you to be there. You'd be a great mediator.
If I have notice, I mean, if you don't call me tonight and say I've got to be there tomorrow morning-
No, it'll be after January 8th, and we can pick our date.
I'm happy to make time. I'm not as traveling as much as I used to, so I could certainly do it, and I'd be honored to do it.
That'd be wonderful. I feel a lot better with you there. The big important thing on this is whatever settlement, the mayor, and myself, and the sheriff, and the chairman, and Commissioner Yeager also volunteered, whatever settlement we come up with on this case, we need everybody to vote for it. We need to yield to their opinion on this issue. It's very difficult to have mediation with county governments involved and bring back something that you agreed to mediation, and the County Commission shoot it down and not approve it. So, everybody will give, I'll give everyone all the background information on this case. You'll be up to speed on the facts. And just please yield to their decision when they do come back to you and say, look, this is what we came up with. And Mayor, are you okay I'm being on this? Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, if at all possible, I'd like for you, the sheriff, myself, the mayor, Commissioner Yeager, and if you can think of anybody else you want on this panel, or anybody else who wants to volunteer. And we'll set up this date. It'll be after January 8th.
Sounds like a good number to me. We have a motion, Commissioner Isabel?
The motion was for the chairman to be the committee person, for you to be.
No other?
I recommended Commissioner Yeager, and I'd like to make a motion to add him to the list.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I'll be there, though. I'll-
You okay, Commissioner Yeager?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir.
I have to sit next to him, so I guess I-
He is also the chair of HR Committee, so that helps.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any other, oh, sorry, Commissioner Creasy, did you-
That was my point.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott?
And I was simply going to suggest that Commissioner Yeager be there, simply because he wasn't involved in commission back in 2009.
Thank you.
And I think that's important to be unbiased.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes the operations report, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Chairman Isabel. It's the longest operations report we've had in some time, not to your fault, but I appreciate all the work you do, and I really do thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay. And really appreciate you and the mayor doing the Rusty Wallace thing. That's big. Okay. Ms. Catherine Ashmary. Apologize for the long delay.
Sorry. I told Robbie I'd be late in the mornin'.
Approved.
Mr. Chairman.
I didn't even ask him. I just told him.
Yes. Apologize. Commissioner Fritz, I'm sorry, Cap.
Before we get off, basically, everything goes a different direction. There was a study done a few years ago about making a single-point entrance to this courthouse because of the security issues associated with it. The judges have been wanting this third floor secure for a long time. And they're still, if you talk to any judge and everything, they're still wanting this third floor secure. When they did that single-point entrance to this courthouse, I think it's going to cost somewhere around close to a million dollars, whatever, to try to get everything fixed up the way they was wanting it and everything. When we did a tour of the buildings, we was looking at for the seniors, the commissioners who toured the Faith Promised Building, they heard me talking about it. If it did not succeed for the seniors, that would be an ideal place then to be considered to moving the County Commission to get them out of the courthouse, off the third floor, and to, then that way, this courthouse, especially the third floor, could be totally locked down, secured, everything be totally moved out. And then with the County Commission, all the meetings and all that stuff is moved out of this courthouse. The number of people coming in here for these meetings and this, that, and the other would be totally eliminated. And you talk about making this place secure, it'd be like Fort Knox in here anymore. That building, Faith Promised Church, is already wired up for television because they always televised their church services. So, it's already set up for the stage, television, and everything for County Commission meetings. The rooms is already set up where you can have all kinds of meetings for different committee meetings. So, that building is a steal. I mean, you're talking about a million-dollar building for half price. And so, if you're not going to get to the seniors, then it's an ideal place to accomplish two things at one time: Secure this courthouse and make it secure to what the judges have been wanting for years and years and years, and have an ideal place for the County Commission to move and start having their meetings. And I'd like to maybe consider then the Faith Promised Church then for the future site of the County Commission.
Is that your motion?
And that's be a motion then.
I have a motion for the Faith Promised Church to be the future site of County Commission. Is there a second? No second? Motion dies. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Catherine?
All right. Contracts approved by the Law Director.
What page, Commissioner Scott? I apologize, Catherine. I haven't found it. If anyone finds the page for the budget minutes, let us-
Is that a separate email, Catherine? What is this now? Annette sends out the contracts separately, yes. Because it's such a big file.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's another, yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Yes, right. I must go to another location, but continue.
Okay. So, we have two contracts under Section A submitting for your approval, either individually or as a group.
It's a pleasure of the committee. Motion by Commissioner Mead?
Approve as a group.
Approve as a group. Seconded by Commissioner Yeager to approve as a group.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Section B, contracts pending Law Director approval. These have actually all now been approved by the Law Director submitting for your approval, either as a group or individually.
That's still on board in the last motion.
That's the last motion. Clear. What do we, because I don't have it in front of me. What do you have there? Because I want-
We have three Cannon copiers for the Board of Education. How many contracts? One, two, two, three, four, five. Five contracts.
This is an email that came from Annette on Wednesday entitled Purchasing Report for December 16th. If there's not a page, it's a solid email. It's 326 pages long. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Very helpful. All right. And this is Section B?
Yes. So, we have three copier leases for the Board of Education, one contract for EMS with Wakefield and Associates to help with accounts receivables with collection of past due accounts, and we have five contracts for EMS for different rehab facilities that they provide transportation services to, and we have the ESG contract.
Okay.
Go for it.
Okay. Commissioner Vow, question?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I apologize to everybody. I'm having a hard time finding where we are.
It's a separate, it's-
Yes, sir. Catherine, if you would, just let me know when we get to the contract on the video visitation, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Brian, could you clear the board?
Those are new.
Oh, those are new? Okay. So, Yeager's, this is your motion to do this, Section B?
No. My motion is going to be to approve as a group.
One to nine, so we can hear the ESG contract separately.
Okay. So, one through nine, which include, we've got a second to that, Commissioner Mead. So, that's Diversity Care for EMS, Waters of Clinton EMS, Summit View Rocky Top EMS, NHC Healthcare Oak Ridge EMS, Norris Health and Rehab EMS, Wakefield and Associates, as you mentioned already, for EMS, which would be an accounts receivable service, and the three Cannon Board of Education contracts. That would be your motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Vow, did you have another question?
No, sir.
Commissioner Scott?
I have a question for Nathan.
I think he's in the hall.
He'll pop in in a minute.
Thank you. You got a little paperwork with you.
Hi. Item number four on these contracts is with Wakefield and Associates to do accounts receivable and/or, I guess that's collection services.
Right.
Who are you? Who are you utilizing right now?
Wakefield and Associates.
And what is their rate of return for you?
On what's their collection percentage?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't actually have that information with me, so I'd, I hate to, to guess at it.
I mean, I, you don't know how much they're collecting for you and you want to continue using them?
So, we've been with Wakefield for, uh, actually predates me. Um, usually though, the percentage is really low because by the time we've sent it to collections.
Mm-hmm.
We've exhausted most means and these are the people that really don't want to be found. So, it's, uh, it's usually a low return on what we're, we're getting back.
How old is the paper that you're sending to them for collection purposes?
Uh, varies based on the account, but it's, uh, usually about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixty days.
Okay, and are they reporting to the credit bureau?
I believe they are, yes. It, it's something that is reflected on their credit report. Yes, it is.
Okay. Are they taking any legal action to try and get any of the monies back?
Yes, and part of the contract does reference that if they, because it is a higher percentage if they do take those actions, then they have a higher percentage of collection that they get off the account.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Any other questions for Nathan as he's here?
I'll ask one.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Creasy.
How much debt do we have that hasn't? How much debt do we have that hasn't been collected that you're sending?
Usually what we see, these are a lot of the people that don't have insurance. Um, so typically we're writing that off because it gets to the point to where it's exhausted and they're not even responding with the collections and it's in the millions.
Is how much?
It's in the millions. That we end up writing off. Yeah.
I don't recall.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Creasy. I'm, I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing with you because, yes, millions are a lot of money.
I remember McCamey coming to us, you know, thirty years ago, and it was only, you know, in the thousands.
Right.
Uh, that we'd write off, every year we'd write off so much debt.
Right.
Uncollectible.
Correct.
But it was never in the millions. I, I think that requires, uh, that requires a little bit more than what we're doing. I, I think that we need a lot of discussion on that, Nathan. I think we need to really do something a little bit more aggressive. I wasn't aware of that kind of number.
Yeah, and I, and I could take, uh, get some more information to see what the options would be for, for hard, if there, if there is harder collecting, uh, for us to get them to do, um, however far that can go. We can try to take that, but again, these are for people that don't have insurance and, and they're paying completely out of pocket.
I know a few collectors like Teresa Scott. She's.
Yeah.
And, and I know, I have a family member that's also does collections for.
Nathan's like, no, no.
Financial.
Hey, hey, she's volunteering. That's.
Hey, we're getting progress here.
We got, is that a motion? Do I have a second?
Yeah, a motion turned over to Teresa. Do it on her spirit, not?
Yeah, Nathan's getting hang of this.
I'm sure Teresa can probably give you some real good advice on how to handle this situation, but when you're talking about millions, we need to jump on that ju- much faster than anything we're doing.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a serious issue.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jay, please.
Commissioner Creasy, you may be recalling when I did it in my office, uh, we used to actually take people to court. And the job got much bigger and, uh, Nathan decided it would be pretty efficient to farm it out to an outside contractor. But, uh, prior to two thousand six, I used to take people to court on a sworn statement on account and get a judicial order on a payment plan. But, uh, talking about Commissioner Scott, one time she told me she found somebody from looking at a, a Facebook picture that had a bush in the background. I, I don't know how you did that, but anyway, that, that, that may be what you're recalling.
And one point of clarification, Wakefield, and we actually had two collectors, Wakefield and FAST. That predates me. I, I didn't outsource collection. That, that predated me. I went down to one collector and, and got away from FAST. We, and we stayed with, it was, Wakefield used to be Revenue Recovery and they changed names, but that predates me. That's something that I've continued doing since I've been director. So, that wasn't something I outsourced.
This needs to be a top priority for this commission. If we're talking about millions, that, we can buy a lot of property and a lot of ambulances and.
Right.
Uh, a lot of sheriff's cars and jail cells and everything else. Uh, we need some attention to this.
Well, we have a motion to pass this one.
Yes, I'm sorry.
But, but no, no, it's good discussion, Commissioner Creasy, but maybe there's a follow-up motion to, you may, to review. It's not to say, don't continue business. I mean, you seem, you wouldn't be asking to continue if you weren't somewhat satisfied with Wakefield, correct?
And, and I'm all for looking at additional options. Uh, I unfortunately have not had the time to look at that and that's why I'm bringing this one up. Actually, it's kind of late, but I, I agree, we need to look at other options and I'd be happy to do that, but right now, we're already late on this.
How long is this contract for, officer?
Uh, it says two-year contract.
Yeah.
To assist with collections of past due accounts. Does this prohibit us if we pass this to, to do other collection forms?
Trying to pull it up.
May I, you can come?
Sure, sure.
And, and I'll cancel my right to speak. I, I appreciate the, the suggestion that I jump in and grab a phone. Um, I used to work for the company that he's referring to as FAST. It's Financial Account Services Team. And I collected a lot of their money back when I worked there, and you're correct. Um, I can give Nathan some pointers as to. How he can bring some money in. I mean, I do have thirty-five years' experience in it now that, that, that the word is out. So, I do know what I'm doing when it comes to accounts receivable and/or collections. I was go- hitting my button again so that I could request to, um, defer this particular contract for perhaps thirty days. Um, allow me to speak with Nathan and, um, bring it back.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor, so it would have to be an amendment to the original motion, which includes one through nine and section B.
This would be for item number four only, to defer number four.
So, you have an amendment to the original motion to.
To defer.
To ver item number four out of one through nine. And you had a second by Commissioner Creasy. Uh, Commissioner Val, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll certainly appreciate the idea to defer. Uh, a couple of comments about collection agencies. Number one, I don't like them. One of the reason I don't like them is at the city, when I served on city council, we decided to go with a collection agency to assist with some outstanding debt that the city had. As a constituent, a, a, as a resident and as a taxpayer of the fourth district, I think we owe it to those constituents who seriously legitimately have financial hardships to be able to work with those people and try to help them. When they are in those situations of no fault of their own, I believe that we do need to help them in times of crisis. Being able to differ, differentiate those from the ones who can pay and choose not to is something I don't feel that a collection agency does very well. I like the old system that Jay mentioned earlier to where we had more of a say in which ones we did that. Now, having said that, if I recall correctly, Nathan, two, two and a half years ago, when we first started talking about the EMS audit, this was an item that we discussed, if debt collection could be done more in-house. I don't remember exactly, I've slept since then, what your answers were on that, and I believe it was addressed in the audit. And even the auditor said, oh, no, the way y'all are doing it with the collection, that usually is the best way to go. I don't agree with that. There are some things in the audit I don't agree with. That's one of them. Uh, I would certainly love for you, Jay, the mayor, Teresa, whomever, to look at a better way of trying to collect this debt. And I thank Commissioner Creasy for even bringing it up. I don't like the current system. It's not efficient. It's not working. And it might help our EMS system quite a bit if we found a better way to skin the cat.
Thank you, Commissioner Val. Good comments. All right, so we're having a, uh, did you want to respond?
Yeah, just, just a couple. Uh, they did ask a question about what the contract, it does have a ninety-day written notification opt-out. So, if we decide we did want to switch, we could give a written notice, ninety days without cause, uh, to, to the company as well. Um, a, a little bit on that is, uh, is we do, for people that are limited on funds, we do set up payments. Uh, we've got some people that pay five bucks a month because that's all they can afford to pay. Uh, and, and we're willing to work with them. Uh, we actually have a, uh, a procedure for them to get the bill deducted or written off. And that actually goes through the finance department, uh, not necessarily EMS itself. That's actually something the finance director, uh, manages. We don't get a whole lot of those, but we do have that in place and, and we do tell people about that if, if they call asking. They have to qualify.
Sure.
Um, they can't just ask for it, but they, they have to qualify. So, uh, there are some of those things that, that are already in place. And some residents especially we work with, if they don't have means, then we, hey, what, what could you for, five dollars? Okay.
Thank you for that.
And we've got people that have been paying that for, for years.
All right, so we have a amended motion to defer for, how, how many days did you say? Thirty days. We had a second by Commissioner Creasy. Any other discussion on the amended motion? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, now back to the original motion, uh, which would cover now one through.
Nine minus four.
One through nine minus four. The numbers guy over here, he's good. Uh, any other questions? We've got a motion to approve one through. We already have a motion. We gotta take action on that. So, any, we don't have any other discussion? All in favor of passing items one through nine minus four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, please continue. Thank you, Nathan.
The next contract is, um, the contract with Energy Savings Group submitting for your approval.
Is it Energy Savings or is that a ener?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my.
Yeah. Energy Savings would have been pretty happy. He'd cover all bases. I like it. That's smart. Okay, so, uh, item ten is Energy, uh.
ESG.
ESG, yeah, let's go that route. Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir.
To approve?
Yes, sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Jaeger. We have discussion. Jay, do you have something to add?
One item, um, you have the draft that the mayor sent over. Uh, we had one item there that we worked out a mutual, um, resolution to with Russ. Uh, he's been very easy to work with and that'll be dealing with the surplus property that we get off the ESG contract. So, there is one small difference, but, um, that's the only thing. Other than that, it's been approved by our office. I, I've kept Catherine in the loop also. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. So, we, we are in this motion asking to approve the contract, correct?
Yes.
Not the funding mechanism yet. That's later.
No, right.
Okay. Okay, so again, commissioners, we are approving the contract as presented for ESG for the energy savings of, uh, this building, uh, the Jolly Building and Daniel Arthur. Is that right?
Um.
All seven, isn't it? All seven buildings?
Any, thank you. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. Uh, one, no. Commissioner Waddell?
Okay, next item under other business is, um, a contract renewal, a five-year extension of our contract with Waste Connections. Um, it was approved by the Solid Waste Advisory Board and their, uh, decision points, um, that they discussed in their October meeting were included with your agenda. Submitting for your approval.
Is you making a motion, Commissioner Mead to, or excuse me, Commissioner White to approve and seconded by Commissioner Mead? Any questions? Um, my question, this contract, uh, from, uh, some of the stuff I read, it's not up until June of two thousand twenty?
Correct.
And, um, what, what, what is the reason we need to extend it now?
Well, if we don't, then we need to get an RFP out now so we can get it placed. I just need to know, you know, where the other.
Jeff, could you come up and speak a little bit and?
The other part of that is.
What's that?
The other part of that is that I.
Wait a minute, I got a comment from Commissioner Mead. I think he said there's no reason to change it and I just wanted to get his opinion. Go ahead, Commissioner Mead. I guess.
Well, I didn't actually ask to speak, but, yeah, I was in the, in on the.
Well, if you didn't ask to speak, you shouldn't, if you didn't ask to speak, you shouldn't speak.
You just, you just gave me the floor. Do I have it?
You do have it now. Continue.
Thank you. The reason that you're doing this so early, as he just explained, is he needs to know now in order to have time to put an RFP on the street if we're considering changing. Waste management has been a good deal for us. They're continuing to be a good deal for us. And my comment was, I see no reason to change horses midstream. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Understood.
In addition to that, there is an option to own this equipment with an extension, but I need to know that as well. So, with the handouts that I've handed out to each of you, if we do go ahead with this extension, I would like a sixty-day review period put in place as a part of that contract extension to look at all of the equipment, make sure that it is in operating order before we actually accept ownership of that equipment as part of this contract.
And Jay, have you reviewed this contract?
Um, yes, for the most part. Uh, are you talking about Waste Management or?
Waste Connections, the Waste Hauling Contract.
I guess my questions are, from what I reviewed before in this contract that we renewed last time, the equipment was, uh, placed on their behalf. And now what you're telling me is the, it sounds like the contract's gonna change and we're gonna assume the equipment after the review and make sure it's all proper and everything.
Right.
You know, part of, part of the last contract, they were obligated, if I'm not mistaken, to, to haul recyclables. And that kind of went away because of the market, but it was in the contract.
Right.
So, now we're getting into the business of saying, okay, we're gonna take your pans and compacters and, and we're gonna take responsibility of it. And, and that's what you're proposing. And I'm, I'm just asking a question. I mean, is, 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 what's it hurt to put it out for a bid?
It doesn't. Um, I do know from speaking to Waste Management, who is the other major competition, because of the capital outlay that they would have to put in place, they are not likely to bid. When we bid this out five years ago, Waste Connections was the only bidder on the contract. I've been in contact with Waste Management. At first, I couldn't get a hold of anybody, but I finally talked to Rob Owen at Waste Management. They did not have the equipment in place. They've, over the last ten, fifteen years, basically an outbid by Waste Connections all over this area, Knox County, our county. They don't have the equipment in place. He said they are unlikely to bid on this and he said, he encouraged us to renew based on the information I provided him. There is a small company in Loudoun County called Sand Tech that operates the Loudoun County landfill. They are interested, but Aaron Elidge, who I contacted over there, said they are smaller. They're sort of an unknown quantity. Don't know if they're gonna be competitive with Waste Connections.
Thank you for the explanation, Jeff. I appreciate it. Uh, Commissioner Isible?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, I'd like to offer my services when you go inspect that equipment.
Definitely. I need your hydraulic expertise, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Jaeger?
Thank you. What's the downside of owning this?
The downside is, most likely, I've contacted a couple of small companies that, one of them is John's, John's Mobile Repair that works and handles the maintenance for Knox County's stuff. Part of the agreement, the, the letter that's attached to this exhibit one. Waste Man, Waste Connections said that they would continue to service the equipment for us for ninety-nine dollars an hour. John's can do it for sixty-five dollars an hour for the hydraulic and time and seventy dollars an hour for any welding.
So, we're not obligated to Waste Connections for repair?
No, and that was the other part of.
All right.
This letter was that we are reserving the right to hire a third-party contractor to maintain that equipment. When, if we take ownership of this equipment, it's gonna reduce our rental costs as part of this contract by about thirty-one thousand dollars. If I've calculated sixty-five dollars an hour correctly, at about nine to ten hours a month, monthly, it's gonna be ten to twelve thousand dollars maintenance cost. There may be additional ten thousand dollars in supplies, fuse. $10,000 in supplies, fuses, hydraulic fluid, et cetera, parts. The only thing that I'm slightly concerned with is we would probably want to purchase one big 15-horsepower motor upfront to have in stock. We do have funding for that available, just so that we are not in a situation where we have a compactor down and then have to wait to order a motor to replace it immediately.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Scott?
How much does a 15-horsepower motor cost?
15 horsepower?
Or 15 horsepower?
12 to $1,500.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Mark me down as a no.
I'd like to commend our director for the report he gave us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Terrocca. Appreciate all you do. Okay, next.
Under new business, we have two contracts submitted for your approval, either individually or as a group.
What are these contracts?
One of them is City Telecoin. This is a 12-month contract for inmate video visitation services. This is one we presented, I believe, two months ago. And even though we weren't required to do a bid, y'all requested us to go ahead and do a bid. And so we did. And the vendor that they had chosen previously also came in as the best value.
Thank you. Commissioner Mead, did you, or excuse me, is this old? Did you make the motion to pass this, sir? Commissioner White?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Clear the board. Commissioner Vow, before we got a motion now?
Yes, I was going to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve. Like Catherine said, we had asked for this to be postponed. The sheriff's put Tyler in charge of reviewing all the contracts currently that we have. And what we have done is we went back and reviewed everything and weighed out the benefits we get as a jail staff with operational benefits from previous and then versus this here that Tyler has found and the cost that we're paying for it. So Tyler's done a good job with this one and this is the one we'd like to go with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vow. Any other comments?
The other contract under new business is the contract for the senior center lease with Teresa Portwood.
The senior what?
The senior center lease, the building they're...
Oh, okay, okay.
Currently in.
Got you. All right. So the first motion is, let's vote on the first one.
However, y'all want to do it.
First one, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Scott. No other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And the next one is the senior center?
Yes.
New revised lease agreement, correct? Motion to approve by Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. We need discussion on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have. If we all have any questions?
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you and your family.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Sorry for the long evening. Yes. Next, we have the budget report by Robbie Holbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Which begins on page three.
Yes.
Page three. He's right up front.
All righty. A couple of things before the amendments. The cash and fund balance report. Restricted funds are at 1.3 million. Committed funds, 2.4 million. Assigned funds, 519,857. Unassigned fund balance is at $4,769,590. Total fund balance is 9.1 million and cash is at 8.2 million, which is up 2.5 million from last year at this time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Also included a sales tax report for the month of October. Again, is up 13% from last year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. And last, the EMS report that I was asked to give each month by the state. After five months, they have collected 43% of their revenue and they have spent 42% of their budget. So they're kind of right on target.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Scott has one.
I have a question for Nathan. He'll come through the door.
Yeah.
I hear him coming.
Bless you.
You can go safety down there.
You should. There he is.
I'll call the mission up there. I'll call the mission.
I have a question for you. It's regarding one of your line items.
Okay.
For accountants and bookkeepers.
Okay.
You have $182,787 as dog ears.
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, what you've spent so far this year is $51,572.
Right.
And that's basically, you've used about 28% of that money. How many people do you have listed in your department as bookkeepers and/or accountants that fall in that particular category?
So there's going to be four. We had a fourth one that was approved in the budget process. And so we're moving that person over from the ops position to the new position, which will come out of that budget account.
What are the title of the three that you have there now?
So I have the chief of administration. I have the billing manager, the transport coordinator. And then the new position that was added was the CQI Community Outreach Coordinator.
After you put this fourth person in, how much is that person going to take out of that particular line item?
So we, if you're getting to, are we going to use all the money that's in that line item? No. Because they weren't, they didn't start July 1.
Right. Approximately, how much do you think you'll have left over?
Uh...
Just a ballpark.
Copy of it. Well, I'd hate to get ballpark. Sometimes I get a ballpark and I'm held to a ballpark. So I'd like to be a little bit more educated on the ballpark.
You've utilized 28% of that, whereas your other items are about in the 40 range.
So we will probably look, I'd say somewhere around 20,000 less than that.
Okay.
Than what's budgeted.
The van that was purchased for your transports, you were going to be putting decals on it and so forth. Have you done that yet?
We did. Yeah, we put, we, just very minor, we just put the Anderson County EMS seal on the doors.
Okay, all right. And so it's up and running. It's already in this budget?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. It's up and running, yep.
Thank you very much. That's what I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it is raining outside.
Yes. I hope we don't have any buildings that have a roof leak. Continue on, Robbie.
All righty, just...
Oh, sorry. Wait a minute. I apologize.
Robbie, can you tell me, are we on track with EMS in terms of revenue and expenditures? Do you feel like we're in pretty good shape?
I do feel like that, just based on, as Commissioner Scott was asking, a lot of their payroll helps them and their insurance and benefits helps them stay in the plus side, I should say. Because they, you know, they don't hire, they have a hard time keeping hires and stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. I apologize. I missed you. Continue on, Robbie.
All right. Before we get started, also, one thing to clear up or to talk about, there was no action taken, but we presented a calendar for the budget. We started that process last meeting. No action was taken, but we will have an action next month. So just to clear that up. All right. Group two transfers from the school department. There was only one. It was $21,577.55, increasing code 14172220524 Professional Development and decreasing code 14171200429 in structural supplies and materials. These funds are being transferred to pay for various professional development for special ed staff.
That's group two?
Yes.
Let's go to the board. We have a motion and a second. Still have to go to the board. Commissioner Isbell, do you have a question? Sorry.
Commissioner Smallridge, just use your pad to place a vote. It's okay. It's all right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Group three appropriations from the school department, looking for approval as a group or individually. There are four of them.
Motion to approve as a group.
Commissioner Fritz, motion to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Just one question I had. The 100,000 for the vehicles, what, it says it's going to be replenished by JE. What is JE?
He's taking another restrictive fund committed for capital outlay. When we use those codes in the finance department, we have to use 3,900 first and then we journal entry it to the right code. It just...
I thought I saw a note on the request.
There's several of them. Any of the 3,000 codes in 101 or 141, we use 3,900 first and then journal entry it out of it.
Okay, journal entry. Is that for the JE?
That's like a, yeah, little transaction.
And it was three vehicles?
Yes.
Two trucks and a car.
Okay, thank you.
I questioned it in budget.
I apologize.
No problem.
Any other questions? Let's go to the board and vote. Thank you for the answers.
You know I ask a lot for it.
I didn't know that. Motion passes unanimously, 14-0.
All righty. Group four appropriations non-school, looking for approval as a group or individually.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Any questions? Let's go to the board.
Robbie, which section is tourism?
Oh, that is this group right here. It was number 14.
The one we just did?
Yes. You want to ask about it?
I just wanted to make a comment in general.
Sure.
During budget, I did question it. It's for ATV trailer parking and it's approximately 10 acres for day use only. And Stephanie said that it'll be greatly appreciated.
She's actually here too, because she thought...
Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah. Just kind of filling in from...
Oh, that's good. Steph, did you have anything to add?
No, no. Just here for questions.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
No questions. Approved. No, you're good. Appreciate it.
All right. There's no group five or group six. So moving on to group seven miscellaneous. The first thing in the miscellaneous section is, was from the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management, Kim Jeffers-Witter, who has presented an update on the Anderson County Compensation Plan. The first motion by Rick Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Chuck Fritz, to accept the proposed compensation plan format for EMS Fund 118, consistent with the sheriff office format.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve, seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Any questions? I noticed in some of the writing, and maybe it wasn't related to this particular motion, were we removing the finance director from the compensation plan?
No.
I see a head bobbing up and down back here, so I just want to...
Oh, for EMS staff?
Uh, so...
All EMS staff is going to be removed, but the finance director position is not in there because it's guided now by the 81 law. And under the 81 law, the finance committee is the one that sets that salary. And it's not guided by the compensation plan.
And, but it has funding attached to it?
Yes.
Okay. Just not through this new compensation plan?
Correct.
That's what I was interested in. Okay, thank you.
I thought we were talking about EMS.
Any other questions? Do you need to go to a board vote on this?
Yes, please.
I think it'd be good to. Let's go to the board. Motion passes unanimously, 14-0. I'd like to thank everybody that's put the work in on this. I know it's been a lot, a long, hard road, and it's nice to see results. So thanks.
All right. Another motion needing approval was made by Commissioner Teresa Scott, seconded by Chuck Fritz, to accept the proposed updated men, med, and max compensation structure.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any questions? We'll go to the board on this, or do you need a voice vote? Doesn't matter.
Board, please.
Board, okay.
I always think it's safer.
Good, Robbie. Motion passes 14-0.
Okay. The rest of the compensation plan was deferred back to the HR committee, HR Advisory Board, and no more action was taken. Section B, Mayor Frank and interim director Robbie Holbert introduced the ESG County Buildings Project and Related Financing for Committee for discussion. No action was taken. And in Section C, Mayor Frank presented analysis for financial comparison of faith-promised church property and the Old Clinton Armory options for the senior center for discussion. No action was taken. So that's all I have for the budget committee.
Thank you, Robbie.
I do have the finance committee next.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There was a few items coming to you tonight on behalf of the finance committee. The first item is a request for commission action to proceed with bond financing. Option number two, the complete ESG project, motion passed unanimously in the finance committee. Cost of the complete project is $7,866,213. The preliminary bond plan for the complete project shows an interest rate of 2.5% for 20 years. The total interest cost would be $2,070,883, making the total principal and interest cost $9,645,883.
Have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any questions? Robbie, I thought, how is this going to be funded?
Okay.
I mean, so is this motion covering the funding, or is this just covering the amount we're going to approve?
The bond.
Oh, it is the bond.
Yes, sir. Well, this is, yes, the bond. But to pay for it, I sent you all, excuse me, an email earlier last week, Thursday, about how I thought we could fund the project. And one of the things, currently in Fund 151, revenue succeed expenditures by $166,490 per year. The refinancing opportunity in Fund 151 will create another $50,000 to $60,000. So the 482,000 needed to fund the project, we should have approximately $217,000 already in the fund. And, which means we'd need an additional $265,000 per year. So of the savings, if you shifted 1.75 pennies from the general fund to Fund 151, it would provide us with an additional funding of $283,500, which is more than enough to finish paying for the yearly total of the ESG project.
So am I, to understand, we would be using a bond?
Money already in 151 and savings that's created from the project.
Okay, so...
There would be no tax increase or anything.
But are we going for a bond?
Yes.
Because I saw somewhere where...
We saw a, well, we'll need to take a vote to approve the first motion made by the finance committee.
So this is just to approve the total amount of money?
The bond financing to go out for a bond? Yes, sir.
To go out for a bond?
Yes.
And then we'll take another action on which...
I have another, I included a resolution in this.
Okay.
You saw that. That's what you're trying to get to, right?
Well, I just saw something somewhere that kind of bothered me. It said it was up to 5% and that, you know, for the bond. I mean, the chart and the statement was two different things. I mean, I'm looking for it, but I'll try to find it because it said up to 5%.
For the...
For the bond. But that's something separate. We'll get to that. Yeah.
No, it was 2.5%.
It's set up.
0.8 was the highest rate.
Well, that's on that fancy chart. If you look at the signature page, it says something. I haven't found it yet, but it said in there to me, and I'll find it while we're working. But I don't want to get off the subject. Right now, we're talking about the financing for the project, for the full project of 7 point whatever million dollars. And then we're going to talk about how we're going to fund it next. Is that my understanding?
We're going to approve the resolution next, if you approve the...
Okay. All right. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to try to explain a little bit of that, where it says, where it's, and it says coupons, but that's like 5%. But that's in our, like in our rural debt or school fund and stuff, that's where it says up to 5%. See, that we're going to get rid of the fives and the fours and the threes and reduce it down. So I think that might be, because that's what I saw as well.
If you're talking about the refinancing, that's going to be the second motion that we're going to discuss.
But that's got, where it's got the fives and the fours.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Let's go to board on this. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Waddell, apologize, sir.
I'm not understanding this clearly. I don't understand why we're using a second party to come in and tell us that we need to replace our windows and our air conditioning units or our light bulbs to save us money. We're paying, to me, it sounds like we're subcontracting, paying a subcontractor to tell us we need to replace our heating and air units to save energy. And I don't know why we're just not doing it ourself and saving the money. ourself and saving the money. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Commissioner Mead, sir.
Okay, well, I want to answer part of his question. One is that we don't have the personnel and capabilities to, to really do this in a, in a complete and correct way. We've used the same organization multiple times for doing similar project with the schools. And the, I guess the, the bottom line is utilities and maintenance savings, based upon performance no better than what they've done for us in the past, pays for ninety-eight percent of the complete project cost. We couldn't have done that on our own. It's, that's part of the, of the report that was on, in the...
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Any other comments, questions? Let's go to the board. Yes is to approve, no is to reject. Motion passes twelve to two. Continue.
Okay, and then in the packet, I included a copy of Resolution Number nineteen dash twelve dash seven ninety-one. Initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed seven million eight-hundred thousand in no dollars, seven million eight-hundred thousand, general obligation bonds of Anderson County, Tennessee. So if we could...
Have a motion by Commissioner Mead?
To approve.
Yes, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Yeager to approve. Any questions?
This resolution, all it does is start a twenty-day protest period. The detailed resolution will come before you all next month.
I thought that was intriguing. People have, ten percent of the voting population have the right to reject it within that twenty, twenty days. That's pretty interesting. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Let's go to the board. And how much is this one for? Is this for the, the ESG project only?
It's for the ESG project only, seven million eight, not to exceed seven million eight-hundred thousand. Which is a little higher than what it's come in at, but, you know, the interest rate could go up. That's just an initial, preliminary.
Motion passes eleven, yes. Three, no.
Okay. The second item is a request for Commission action as well. The Finance Committee recommended approval for refinancing Fund One-Fifty-One General Debt Service Series Two Thousand Ten Bonds and Series Two Thousand Eleven D Bonds, refinancing Fund One-Fifty-Two Rural, Rural Elementary Debt Service Series Two Thousand Eleven E Bonds, and refinancing Fund One-Fifty-Six Rural High School Debt Service Series Two Thousand Eleven F Bonds. All refinancing to occur without extending existing terms.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Dr. Parrott, you, you in support of this?
Yes, it saves, it saves the, it saves the fund almost a hundred thousand dollars a year over the next ten years. So it saves a little over a million dollars. It doesn't have, that was one thing that our board didn't want to do. It doesn't add, it doesn't push that down the road. It's the same amount of money, just less interest rate. So I'd rather us keep the money and give it to the bank.
Thank you.
It could save the general fund or the One-Fifty-Four One Fund fifty to sixty thousand and the schools a hundred, over a hundred thousand, so...
Thank you, Robbie. No other questions. Let's go to the board. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the last motion, I'm seeking a motion to accept the Finance Committee minutes as part of the Commission minutes. Pages one-twenty-five and one-twenty-six in your packet is the full Finance Committee minutes. When I first was going to submit the minutes to Annette, I was, part of this was consent, consent agenda and part of it was regular, but she told me that Commission doesn't prefer, doesn't like it when you break one meeting down into two agendas, so I've included it all in the end.
So one-twenty-five and one-twenty-six.
It's under old business is the rest of the meeting, which doesn't have to be approved by the, by the County Commission, but it is part of the minutes.
We have a, is this a new board here? Commissioner Meredith, motion approved, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any questions?
Oh, that's Yeager.
Oh, sorry, Yeager. So used to saying Scott.
Yeah, positive, what?
Yes, everything's positive in this world. Has to be. Uh, no, no questions. Um, okay. All right, Commissioner Anderson, sir. Sorry.
I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't hit it?
I didn't, yeah.
Just a, foopaw.
Yeah.
I bet you could come up with something.
This could be a voice vote, too.
All right, let's do a voice vote. All in favor of the Finance Minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, that's all I have. Merry Christmas to all of y'all.
Merry Christmas to you and thank you for all your work. What's next? Circuit Court Clerk Rex Lynch, appointment of judicial commissioners with terms to expire August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. The following Rex Lynch, Angie Perez, Shay Lee, am I saying that right, Rex? I don't want to get butchered here. Cricket, Amanda Vow and Emily Wallace. They have a motion to approve of Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Waddell. Any questions? All in favor, say, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Merry Christmas, Mr. Lynch, to you and your family and your staff. I'm sorry for the delay.
Mr. Chairman, they asked a question.
Absolutely.
What does that commissioner do?
Commiss, uh...
Somebody answered that?
You, come on.
They arrive early in the mornings, around six o'clock, and the police officers now come to them and get their warrants signed. To my knowledge, they don't do any of the search warrants. They're just there to, there's Rex. They asked, the question was, what do they do? And I responded, they come in early, about six in the morning, they assist the police officers so they don't have to step or, stay around. They sign just your warrants, they don't do any search warrants. Can you elaborate on anything else they do?
Just, just sign the warrants, no search warrants, just the real simple warrants. I called Tyler Mays this, this past week, just to make sure. And I said, I don't want to exaggerate, but we're saving thousands of dollars in overtime, including the cities as well. So it's, it's working real well. Talked to Chief of Police and no credge about three weeks ago, just asked him, was he pleased with it? And it's, everything's working good, so.
That's great. So they used to have to stick around until the clerks got to work and, uh, that, that was overtime involved at that point. And these guys have been up all night long anyway.
So last year, we proposed this, we implemented it for one year. And so what we're going to do, we'll try it for one year, we'll see how it works. So we did a one, one-year term. So that's why I said this year, I'd like to do it for three years and we'll, that'll be the full term of office, so.
Commissioner Vow.
I was just going to ask you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott.
Rex, while you're here, how's your collector doing?
Doing real well. Collections are probably up thirty-five, forty percent. So we're, we're real pleased with collections. We hope to get better, so.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. Appreciate it. All right. Have a good evening, sir. Human Resources, Kim Jeffers-Widicker, Director, please. How are you?
I'm good.
Thank you for your patience in this meeting.
Thank you all for giving me time to speak. Just a couple of housekeeping items. Our new secure onboarding and e-form system is up and running, and we've got about sixty percent of the staff enrolled. So that's going fairly well. Hoping to get the remainder of the staff enrolled before benefit timeframe, because that's how we're going to elect benefits this year. So we're working on that. The benefit survey has been sent out to the staff members about a week and a half ago, and so far, we've got about twenty-three percent of them responding. So I hope to be able to report out to you all probably about March, what those results look like, so you can hear from our MVPs. Last thing and the most important thing, the reason I wanted to come before you all tonight, is the Human Resource and Risk Management Office started brainstorming on how we could show our heartfelt appreciation to the staff members. So in doing so, starting in two thousand eighteen, the HR Office began in collaboration with the department heads to facilitate a recognition of staff for their years of service. And in doing so, we have provided twenty-seven staff members with recognition for their dedication to Anderson County. Those awards and recognitions are also posted on our Facebook page, so you can always go on there and take a gander. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to read those to you tonight, to gain some more recognition and appreciation for those staff. So in recognition of five years of service, of dedicated, dedication to Anderson County, was Highway Department Gerald Todd Lamb, Michael Parton, Circuit Court Nancy Schultz and Emily Wallace, Huntsville Library Meg Harrison, Fleet Services Scott Smith and Mark Dyson Jr., Purchasing Sheila Davis, Circuit Court Cassie Watson and Carolyn Templin and Ashley Brock, Parks is Jason Hollenbaugh, I tried to say that right. Juvenile Court was Tracy Spitzer, County Clerk Angel Dotson and Sydney Sison. In recognition of ten years of dedicated service to Anderson County with the Highway Department is Ronnie Martin, County Clerk Ron Despava and Kimberly Bunch, and with ACTV, our own Andy Garrett. In recognition of fifteen years of dedicated service was Health Department Sheila Roach and Finance Department Karen Holbrook. In recognition of twenty-five years of service to Anderson County was Property Assessor Todd Holbrook and Election Commission Kim Evie. Thirty-five years of recognition went to Ms. Nita Wall with Circuit Court's Office and Sandy Sherwood and the Clerk and Master. Forty years of service to Anderson County Libby Smith in the Finance Department. Forty-five years of service to Anderson County was Darrell McGee in Buildings and Grounds.
Wow.
So if you all get the opportunity, please thank them.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have. Y'all have any questions with me?
Commissioner Scott, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you and your staff and your family, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Director of Schools, and Dr. Parrott, I told you last meeting I wouldn't make you wait so long, and I'm guilty as charged.
I brought cookies tonight, too.
I saw that. Thank you, sir.
That's from our cafeteria staff. They made those cookies. They, just a few things. I, I hope you got a chance to read my report.
Chuck's going to make his way down there. Grab me a couple, too, Chuck. Oh, no, I think Chuck's going out the door.
I, I hope you got a chance to read the report. Uh, I'm excited that we're going to do almost one-point-eight million dollars' worth of needed upgrades, one of them being the GM. And as you know, we saved, the, the county and the board saved for three years to get that money. They're signing the contracts and we're going to hope to have that done in a hundred-and-fifty days, so we're going to be done with that. And a lot of these other things we've really needed to do, but the best thing is, we, we've not had to pull that money out of fund balance. Uh, your, your generosity and, and the, really the great plan we put together, that money will be there. And, and so we're not kicking anything down the road. And, and as tonight, you know, you've, you've allowed us to grow them fund balances over the next ten years. It'll grow a million dollars. So that, that's going to be great. And, and, and one thing I've got to say, too, about Jim Woodward, as, as you know, you, you may not know if you're in, in, ten years ago, every debt service we had in this county was a variable rate. There was no fixed rate, and it continued to go up and up. And, and over that five or six-year period, with the help of the Finance Department at the county and with Jim Woodward, we put everything in. There is no more variable-rate bonds. And, and that, that is a great thing. And I think that, we, we know we can plan for those things. But the other thing is, we had one of the best report cards to date. If you get a chance, look at our board meeting. It's online on Channel Twelve. And Ms. Russell, our, our director, over, over all of our data, everything we needed to go up in, we went up in. Everything we needed to go down in, we went down in. And it, it was a great year. But the one thing I just want to talk about at this Christmas time of the year, the, the one thing I'm most proud of, is I'm most proud of our students. Our students in Anderson County schools, they did over two-hundred-and-fifty angel trees. And when you think about that of, of giving back to the community, and they did over four-hundred boxes for needy families. When, when I talk about Andersonville, they're doing a, a little thing in the morning, and, and they've got, I guess they've got forty-five to fifty bilk crates full of food, of, of non-perishable food, that they're going to be giving to the, the Norris Food Bank. And, and I think that's one of the things that, that we teach in Anderson County, is that you got to pay it forward and that you give back. And I am really proud of those. So if they're listening, hopefully they're in bed by now, because they have school in the morning. But if their parents are listening, I hope they understand it. We're proud of our students for doing that. I, I remember back when we had the, the fire out at the zoo, and, and I challenged them to give a dollar apiece. And they raised over about twelve thousand dollars for the, for that, for the, for the zoo and the Ponderosa Zoo. And, and it's amazing group of kids, so I'll, I'll be quiet.
No, thank you, thank you for everything you say. And I, it, it's impressive, so it's a, I appreciate you saying that. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. I had a question with regard to the audit finding. Sorry to be a Debbie Downer, but...
Yes.
There was one finding from our last audit.
Yes.
And it said that it's the offices of Director of Schools and Interim Finance Director, and the finding was revenue anticipation notes were not retired in compliance with state statute.
Yes, and that was because we didn't have a budget. We couldn't, we, there was no, there was no money in that fund. And one thing we did this year, if you notice, we put, and what happens is, the federal money, that is a, we have to spend the money and then they give it back to us. And what happened is, there was not enough money in there at the end of the year to cover those. And there was enough in the budget to cover those. But what we've done this year, instead of putting a hundred thousand dollars in that fund to start with, to give it a little seed money, we put two-hundred thousand in there. So that wouldn't happen again. And that was just a, that was just the way things happened that year, the way the budget processed it.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm bringing this to your attention or everyone's attention, because during our Commission conferences in the fall, one of the things that they do is they give out awards to those counties that have no audit findings. And I was really anticipating going up and getting another award, you know, at least for the county, being a good thing. So perhaps next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Dr. Parrott, I, I just had to go to the middle school today, drop off the second backpack my child carries, one for sports, I guess, and one for the books. But she forgot, for good news, she forgot the sports bag, not the books. But when I went into the, to the building today, I noticed there's a lady standing in the hallway, and she was handing out milk and food, and she's just standing behind the table. And it, it amazed me. I mean, because it looked to me as if kids would just come by and grab a bag or get some milk and just go on their way. And, and I thought that was such a neat gesture, to be able to allow the children, as they're going class to class, to grab a snack and I, I just, do you?
One of the thing, one of, one of my goals this year is to increase participation in breakfast. And, and what, and, and what Ms. Burrow did and, and what Ms. Owens did, and a lot of our schools, we're trying to make it easier for the kids. It's called a grab and go.
Yeah.
And, and, and as you know, because of, of, of some foresight, is almost all of our schools, other than our two high schools and two Norris Elementary, Norris Middle, they all eat free. So you can get that grab and go when we just count the number. So our anticipate, our rate of, of the students that are eating breakfast is up, I think almost eighteen percent this year.
And those are free to the students?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
Yes. And, and, and what is amazing with this is, is that if, if I pick that up, and I, if you stand there, you'll notice, if, if I pick a milk up and I pick a, a pack of something up, and maybe I don't want the milk, well, they set the milk or they set that other in another place. So if I come in and, and I'm hungry and I can only get one milk, I can take that other milk, too. So, so it's a way that, uh, before, if a student would take it and they'd put it on their tray and they'd just leave it and they'd throw it away and we're saying, and, and those are things that we just try to do to make it, it better for our students. You don't want any of them to go hungry.
No, I, I, I just appreciate it. It was really neat to see. So, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Parrott? Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas to you, your family and the whole school administration. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have a nice time.
You got to remember the reason for the season, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I will be partying.
Understood. Okay, next county mayor, she's got one or two items.
I do. First of all, thank you to the Commissioners who voted to try to solve the problem for our seniors. I appreciate that. And... And the nature of politics is oftentimes we disagree and sometimes it gets a little more contentious than others. And as I sit here tonight, I look at Dr. Bob and that's what's most important, is our loved ones, and I feel for you, Dr. Bob.
Thank you.
It puts it all back in perspective. The first item is Resolution nineteen twelve seven eighty-eight. This is authorizing me to submit a Community Development Block Grant application. Okay, gotta pull this back together. I do have one change on this. The limits have changed and so we are able to apply for more. So you have a resolution before you that says up to, but not to exceed, six hundred, I mean, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in federal funding and a hundred and seven-thousand five-hundred-and-thirty in local match. We're now able to take that up to six-hundred-and-thirty thousand and a hundred and twenty-nine-thousand and thirty-six dollars in local match, and that local match would come from the Water Authority. And so I'm asking for approval for that authority to submit that application with those funding numbers, I would get those corrected, updated numbers to the clerk, that is the only change in the resolution. These are, we actually applied for this last year, we fell a few points short. This is for the Savage Garden area and I think there's a Faust Lane, there's a couple of other little spots, but the majority is fifty, sixty folks bringing water lines to, bringing water to folks in that area. So that's what this is for, the county would have no financial match required.
Have a motion by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner Meredith, any questions?
As amended by the mayor.
Okay, as amended by the mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
The next is Resolution nineteen twelve seven ninety, supporting legislation that would improve reimbursements to ground ambulance providers. And that's in your packet there and a lot of fellow mayors are actually supporting this as well. It would benefit both private and public services.
Clear the board, Brian, please. Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. And I've talked to Nathan about if this does, if this change does take place, what would it mean for Anderson County's EMS system? Depending upon how it's implemented, it could be a plus-up of two-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollars for our system by this change, so.
Motion by Commissioner Scott to approve, seconded by Commissioner Yeager to approve, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
The next is Resolution nineteen twelve seven ninety-three, this authorizes me to send the official request letter for payment to DOE for 2019's payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, seven-hundred-and-ninety, six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety and sixty-four cents, I'm sorry. Last year, I forgot, I printed that off and I forgot to bring it, but our request was around six-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, so it's a plus-up of twenty-four, almost twenty-five thousand, plus-up.
Okay, we have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, any questions? Can we just move that twenty-five percent rate to like thirty-five?
That is, you know.
Just thought I'd ask.
That's the, that, that all goes back to that Atomic Energy Act and the agreement you make and how you have to assess it.
How long do we have to live under the nineteen fifty-five Atomic Energy Act? I mean, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I guess until Congress changes it, that we do have to go to that.
It is a plus, so thank you. So we're up twenty-four thousand on, over last year's. All right, any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mayor, next.
Okay, next is TCA requires that when a civil service member is either reappointed or newly appointed, that the mayor must designate a chairperson of the Civil Service Board and I request the reappointment of Bill Riggs as chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Next is the appointment of Ernie Bowles. Dwayne Stukesbury has left a vacancy and Dwayne has just been a wonderful member of the Anderson County Water Authority and he has some health issues, he's had to step away. And so Ernie Bowles would be filling the Commissioner Stukesbury's unexpired term and Dwayne was a county commissioner at one point in time, that term expires nine twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Jamison, any questions? Prayers for Dwayne and his health issues. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
The next is an appointment for Anderson County Development Corps, I wish to appoint James Cooper, term expiring nine twenty-twenty-two, and Huvon Evans, term expiring nine twenty-twenty-two.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Next is to, this would actually be a reappointment of Jerry White to the Regional Solid Waste Board, term expiring nine twenty-twenty-five. I did reach out to Commissioner White, he is willing to serve.
Motion by Commissioner Jamison, and seconded by Commissioner Scott to approve, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
New convenience center's open Friday, correct?
Yes, fingers crossed.
Yes.
Next is the nine-one-one board. Tommy Mariner was appointed and you all confirmed, and thank you, you confirmed his appointment. He did have some concerns because his wife immediately passed away and then he was abroad and so he had to miss some meetings and, so that's on his record, so we're going to do a reappointment because if you miss three meetings, then it's a vacancy, so.
Motion approved by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And that is all for my report.
Commissioner Isom.
Mayor.
Yes.
Earl, who was talking about you was gonna do a return on investment if we sell that.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One, the other bidder that bid three-hundred-and-fifty, he was, didn't really have any plans for it other than maybe making it office space, which does not generate retail revenue. Now, if we, let's say that Rusty Wallace comes in, he revamps the building, and so that's gonna be retail revenue at nine, nine and three-quarters. And when I was in tobacco business, I did almost two-hundred thousand dollars a month in selling tobacco, but let's just say they're doing a hundred, and we're talking about return on investment. If we're doing a hundred thousand dollars a month, that's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year that we're not getting. If they're doing two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. If they do five-hundred thousand dollars a month, and now we're talking about selling cars and high-end items, you're talking about five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars a year. Anybody that can get a one-year return on investment, you better invest in it. Thank you.
Good comments. And Mayor, I'll just say this, on my own behalf, not on behalf of the commission, but I would encourage you to continue the effort with faith, promise and putting together the package. I think the only problem here tonight was, just, I could speak for myself, I don't have all the information in front of me. I'm not criticizing you, I'm not, so I'm hopeful that you'll come back to this body with the purchase agreement and all the details laid out and we're gonna be able to look at it and, just like we did on the ESG project or the refinancing of the bonds, and we're gonna be able to make a good decision and I'm looking forward to doing that. So I don't, I hope you don't walk away from here tonight thinking that it's a dead issue.
Okay.
That's my only words to you and I hope that you will continue on and put that information together and come back to this body and the budget and wherever else you need to go.
Okay, I will do that, thank you, sir.
Any other comments for the Mayor? Thank you, Merry Christmas to you and your family and your department.
Merry Christmas to you all and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Happy New Year to you as well. Okay, next is Law Director, sir.
I'm gonna be as quick as I possibly can. Anybody have any questions on the contract approvals, the sheriff's promotional testing? Okay, we've got C is taken care of, the stream restoration project, the lease of surplus vehicles is taken care of, the selection and mediation team is taken care of, we dropped F and G tonight, we've taken care of H, the zoning amendment's been taken care of, we did have a vote on that. The zoning case update, we finished, or Danny finished this week, the destruction of the Hidden Hills Drive, the pictures look great, he seeded the yard, it's just blank yard now, they're moving on to Oak Road, we were successful in getting the bank in there to do. Right at six, I've got the invoice in my office, but we'll attach a lien to the property and get our money back on that, but it looks good, we've got some, if we ever do foreclose on that lien, we've got a couple of neighbors that wanna pick that property up. The, it does not have a mortgage on it, when the insurance paid off for the fire there, it cleared the mortgage, there's a release that's been recorded, so that helps us. The Oak Road property that, down in District One, we've been successful in getting the bank to move in there and clean that property up, so hopefully we won't have to spend too much money on that property. I wanted to let you know the Explorer Post that the Sheriff Barker has created is doing wonderful. We've got twenty-eight kids, young men and women ages fourteen to eighteen, that'll be starting their academy in the sheriff's office, this is a great project, it lets a lot of young men and women know what law enforcement is truly about, we've got some there that want to be involved in law enforcement, emergency services and also maybe a lawyer at some point. It's super working with these young men and women and it's really a fantastic opportunity for any of our sheriff's deputies that want to be an advisor on it and be involved in this project. We're hoping we can use it as a recruiting mechanism in the future and get some, let's, at least these individuals will know if they're cut out for it or if they, they're not cut out for it and it'll be an easy vetting process for us, we'll know what we're getting, but I encourage you all to come to some of their meetings and meet some of these outstanding young men and women in our community, it'll make you feel good about what we've got coming up in this world. The, we've taken care of the zoning resolution, I do need a quick executive session, it will take less than five minutes. I do want to let you know that we'll have to start posting the Jackson Law notices for the public hearing on February eighteenth. I'll need the cooperation of Gary Long, which I always get, and Danny Phillips and the Codes Enforcement Office, we will come to the Budget Committee, we'll need an appropriation for some signage that's required under the law, there'll be some mailings there, but the most of it is on TVA to do the public notice. I do have some great news, Johnny Alley was selected as Assessor of the Year, so that's a wonderful title. He's not one to stand up and say something, so I did it for him, but he's the Property Assessor of the Year and he's our own and he certainly earned it, he's done a fantastic job. Anyway, I just need a few minutes of your time and we'll take care of this short executive session and then we'll get out of here, but Merry Christmas to every one of you and I appreciate all you do for me.
Thank you, Merry Christmas, Jay, we appreciate you and Merry Christmas to your family and your department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We already did the operations, so that's done. Legislative, do we still need to get into that?
No, we're all set.
You're good, yep, okay. Resolutions, establishing meeting dates, let's get a, oh, sorry, Commissioner Scott, I apologize. Go ahead.
I just wanted to bring the people's attention who are listening at home and/or maybe seeing this on a recorded level. On December eleventh of this year, the Clinton Courier has posted on page nine, in the Seventh Judicial District for Anderson County, through the Chance Report Division, we have about thirty properties that are delinquent on their 2014 taxes and if you don't want your property to go up for sale, perhaps you'll pay your taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Resolution, Resolution nineteen dash twelve dash seven eight nine, establishing meeting dates and times for Anderson County Board of Commissioners, it's in your packet, do we have a motion to approve as presented? The resolution and the dates. Motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, any questions on those dates as presented or the resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I guess the next thing is, commission is executive session and then we'll come back to new business and old business.
Yes.
Do I recess? Okay.
I'm just about to take a vote for executive session.
Let's do a board vote, executive session. I guess I need to vote.
Did someone make the motion?
I guess I do need somebody to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Yeager for executive session. Any discussions on that, questions on the executive session?
Well, the Law Director probably remembers years ago, I always voted against the executive sessions, but I'm gonna vote for it tonight.
All right. Jerry's being awfully flexible. Motion passes unanimously, well, excuse me, twelve yes, one no. Commissioner White, yes. Okay, let's go, we're gonna go into executive session, clear the room, please, the Mayor can stay and it should take about five minutes.
The cameras are still. When Andy is on his way back up here, the cameras are still. I'm waiting for Andy to clear this off, but it's still in recording.
Okay.
He walked out, and Andy is going to let him in.
Okay.
Hey, Annette, Annette, will you go down and get that?
Johnny, it's all that curly hair that got you.
Yeah, I know, it just drew him right in.
You want me in now or just open the door?
Yeah, I wasn't supposed to.
I wouldn't believe that.
Oh, okay.
How do you like us having power?
We have power.
Yes.
I don't know.
I didn't even notice that.
Well, they did a good job on it, I thought it would be some big box, but Brian did a good job.
Locked out. That's all right. Brian had your back.
I didn't even bring my card to get in tonight.
How's the cookies?
Did you bring me one?
I know, man, I was like.
All right.
All right, we're back on and ready to move forward. I think the next thing is old business, well, is there any additional old business to come before this committee? Okay, new business.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up the funding for the FAA grant funding request.
Yes, sir.
And I sent an email to the Law Director today, if I could ask him if he had any options for us in supporting TDEC Oak Ridge operations and their funding that they need and if he could give us some options we may have for that.
Yes, sir. I first offered you the opportunity to do a resolution, but we're looking at next month and it sounds like this is a time-sensitive issue that we need to move on it quite, right away, but everybody is familiar with the letter, has read it, or what, if you get a, make a motion tonight, I'll be glad to write a letter in support of our position and get that out immediately, we can file it up in January with a resolution, that may help us a little bit.
Well, Mr. Todd said, I think earlier in the evening, that the appropriations budget has been approved, so it may be. has been approved, so it may be mute to some degree, but I still think we should come up with some kind of resolution in support of the Oak Ridge TDEC operation.
Jerry, your mind.
Okay, I can have it ready in January, but again, if you want something done immediately, I'll be glad to write a letter and we can do that with a majority vote tonight. Otherwise, and in addition, I'll come back with a resolution for the January meeting and we'll run it through operations or legislative or the subcommittee.
Is that your motion, sir?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is this the letter and the resolution or just the resolution, Jerry? What was your intent?
I think it's a little late for the letter if they've already passed the budget, so.
But I'd like for us to show our support for future funding.
Thank you, Commissioner Crease. Commissioner Yeager?
On a different topic, sir.
Yes, sir.
You ready to move on?
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
I had something on that subject.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, the letter we received today from Commissioner David Sawyers from the Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation really does a great job explaining what the issue with this is. I'm just requesting and make a motion that we make this letter, which was sent to us electronically today, so it should be easy to attach to the minutes of this meeting.
Have a motion add.
Very good, Steve, thank you.
To the minutes of this meeting. Had a second by Commissioner Meredith. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
This letter dated November 5th.
Motion, motion carries, thank you. Commissioner Yeager?
I'd like to make a motion to approve for the IT Department, a contract not exceeding $34,000 to be paid for out of undesignated fund balance.
Have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, I meant to hit second.
That's all right. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Quick question, Commissioner Val. HVAC in the jail, I've had a couple of comments from people saying that there's some issues at the jail. I just wanted to ask you so you can respond and people can hear.
Yes, sir. That was the issue that we fixed last month.
Yes, sir.
The heating and air unit went out and our female general population housing unit, the temperature had dropped during that time. It was kinda cold unlike that it is today.
Right.
And we had, that was an emergency status kinda thing that we had to get repaired quickly and this body appropriated the funds and it was already, it's already been installed, we're good to go.
Okay. And far as the jail population, is it heavy or?
We went over capacity three times in the last couple of weeks. Over the weekend, we've dropped back down a little bit, but we keep toying with our capacity, so.
Thank you for your answer.
We're trying our best, Mr. Chairman, since you brought it up, we're trying our best to get enough officers hired to be able to hurry up and open up our Unit 1 dormitory. We're having a hard time finding people willing to do the job for the price that we paid, but I'll take this opportunity to invite anyone to visit our website or come down to the jail or the sheriff's office, pick up an application. We'll be more than happy to talk to them and try to put them to work.
What kinda, I mean, just in general, I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but what's the pay range?
Right now, our starting pay is $15.17 an hour.
Wow, okay. So anyone out there looking for a job, they qualify, fill it out online?
Do you have to carry your gun?
Not necessarily, no, sir.
Excellent. How many are you looking, well, never mind, I'm getting off the clock. Thank you.
I appreciate the question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other new business? Annette, Annette Pruitt, please report, front and center, please. You're required to give a 90-minute dissertation on how, yeah, 90 seconds. Annette, just want to thank you for all you do. I know many of us call on you at different times, this is on behalf of the full commission. We thank you, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. Appreciate it. Being that there's no more business before this body, this meeting stands adjourned. Merry Christmas to all and your families, thank you.